We'll call the June 11th, 2012 Fayetteville City Council Meeting to order. We thank everyone for being here tonight on this rainy day. And if you would stand for invocation, which is tonight led by Reverend Dolly Manigo, who is an Associate Minister at Lewis Chapel and also First Vice President and Chaplain of the NAACP. And then if you would remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for allowing us to come together one more time to discuss business about our city of Fayetteville and our county of Cumberland. Father God, we know that you're able to do all things. And God, we thank you because you have all of us in the palm of your hand. Father God, we are so proud that you don't go for red, white, yellow, green, or blue, but you are for all of us, oh God. We're all precious in your sight. So we want to thank you, oh God, and on behalf of everyone assembled here today, for whatever reason, whatever desire they have that they would like to discuss. Father, I pray that the committee will see them as an individual, will take heed to what they have to say. Oh God, we just thank you for everything that you've done for us all day long, how you've blessed us, how you've kept us, and how you've stood by us, how you've watched over us, and how you brought us safely here, oh God, without any hurt, harm, or danger. And we just want to say thank you. We want to say thank you, oh God, because we know that you're able to do all things, everything but fail. And we just, we count it a blessing to know that everyone here is in one accord, that we want what's best for this city, this city of Fayetteville. Father, we all give you the glory. We always give you the power. We give you everything, oh God, because we know that you gave it to us, and we just want to give it back. Father God, we ask you to bless us and help us and keep us, and let us be mindful of all the things that we ask for, in Jesus' name. And Father God, we ask you, at the end of this session, to dismiss us from this place, but never from your presence, and give us traveling mercy back to our destination safely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have several bits of information to share with you, beginning with Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to notify the city of Fayetteville and citizens that we are seeking applicants for several boards and commissions, and it does include the newly-added Residential Rental Property Review Board, which we're seeking seven volunteers to serve. So please go online to visit our website, and under the topic Boards and Commissions, or call our city clerk, Ms. Pamela McGill, and she will send you the application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Davie.
Good evening, everyone. I want to announce to the public that we have our All-American City Finale. As we wrap up a wonderful year of All-American City, there'll be a Swamp Dog Finale for the All-American City. This, it's coming up this Saturday, June 16th at 7:00 PM. So you all are all welcome to come out to the Swamp Dogs Fayetteville game as we celebrate the All-American City Finale this Saturday at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. There is going to be a, we're having a Bragg Boulevard Quarter Meeting Series that's going on all week. It started today, and it's going to go from June the 11th to June the 13th, 2012. All of those meetings will be held in the AIT Festival Hall at 421 Maiden Lane. Now, one of the big ones, the main presentation where we're asking the public to come out to Mayor and Council, would be on June the 13th. That's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00. So if you want to give your, your public perspective, please come out to the Bragg Boulevard Meeting Series, the public meeting for the city. It's going to be on Wednesday, June the 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the AIT Festival Hall, and that is at 421 Maiden Lane. That's downtown Fayetteville. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any others, Council? Okay, we'll move now to Item 4, which is Approval of Tonight's Agenda. Mighty quiet. Mr. Bates, thank you, Mr. Bates. Thank you, Ms. Chris. Any discussion on approval of the agenda? Let me ask for your vote, please. That is unanimous, and we'll now move to tonight's Public Forum. Give the guidelines for that. As you know, the Public Forum is designed to invite citizen input and discussion. The Public Forum shall last no longer than 15 minutes, and each speaker shall have up to two minutes to address council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. If you're interested on speaking on any of the items that are included in tonight's public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. When you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left of your two minutes. And when you see the timer located on the podium blink and change from yellow to red, that means the full two minutes has expired. When your name's called, we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And I understand we have a sizable number of people here tonight, so we ask that you help us be respectful of everyone's time. Ma'am, we'll open the Public Forum.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Christopher Toba.
My name is Christopher Toba, and I was born and raised here in Fayetteville. And I'm here to speak about the way me and my mom were treated in the city of Fayetteville. When we went to project operation ends much on April 20th, we came to see about taking the shower. We see a lawyer. And we had 13 dogs in our car at the time, and we were trying to get a shower. And Sue Ann Burr told us that it was hot in the morning times, like 39 degrees, and she said our dogs were panning, and she told us to let our dogs out. And then she called a pound while they were running around, and while the gate was locked, and she called a pound and said they had no, they had no leashes on the, because I know Fayetteville has a leash law, Cumberland County does, and she told us to let the dogs out. And she called a pound and said they had, they didn't have leashes on all 13 dogs, but she's the one that told us to let them out. And she said that we were starving the dogs, which was untrue. We had dog food in the car, and we were kicked out of our house because the, the dogs and, but we didn't live in Fayetteville. We lived in Hanuk County, and we were trying to get a house in Hanuk County, which there ain't no law on how many dogs you can have in Hanuk County. And nowhere in our lease said how many dogs we could have, because under our old property manager, we signed, it didn't say how many dogs we could have. And we, and they also said our dogs had mange, which is untrue. They have free dermatitis, where they eating their hair off of the skin of each other. And there was a city cop that, the city policeman came to the pound, and he wouldn't let us leave when we had his appointment to see a lawyer.
We appreciate you coming, sir. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Charmaine Toba.
Good evening. I'm his mother, Christopher Toba, and I just want to reaffirm what he said. Like I said, we came here, and I thought we would be welcomed. I mean, we're having a situation we were dealing with, and in return, I was trying to get, you know, Cumberland County is supposed to be All-American, I mean Fayetteville is supposed to be All-American City, and I expected to be treated. My father spent 33 years in the Air Force. My ex-husband's been eight, and my son's been in almost 20 years in the Air Force. We're truly a military family, and like I said, and I have never been treated so bad in all my life as I was out there. I was lied to. I was deceived. And then they came and took my dogs, and now they won't tell me where they are. I don't appreciate that. And like I said, I've been investigating what's going on out there, and I'm not, I'm not happy not one bit with Cumberland County or Hanuk, I mean Fayetteville City or Cumberland County. I know you two are separate, but yet you're in each other, and it's confusing. But like I said, I'm working on the differences. But like I said, we are, you know, you're supposed to be All-American City, and according to the thing, you're supposed to welcome everybody, you know, all cultures, all races, all, you know, everybody. And I don't feel like we were treated that way at all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Ms. Joyce Malone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. I am Joyce Malone, and I live at 516 Spalding Street. It's the Broaddale area here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I would like to speak to you on the Board referendum of Parks and Recreation. I have been a citizen of Fayetteville for 50-plus years, and I spoke with neighbors and also members about this issue. If we are to be the All-American City that we claim to be, then the public should have the right to vote. Give the citizens of Fayetteville an opportunity to vote on this issue, not just you, the City Council alone. And please do not remove the item, Parks and Recreation, from the agenda tonight, because some council members are not interested in how the public feel about having a public facilities upgraded or new at this time. I will say again, do the right thing and get the public involved. Give them the right to vote. Put this item on the ballot. Don't stall and put it aside for another 90, or maybe, I don't know, a year, 90 days or a year. Things can be accomplished. Let's do it. Remember, this is good for the whole city. For those council members who have not visited or even spoke recently with the recreation center directors, I advise you to do so. All of you know, Fayetteville needs to move up a notch with its facilities. Just ask the citizens. I say again, do the right thing and let the citizens decide, because it's the citizens who will be using the parks and the recreation centers. And put this item on the ballot for them to voice their opinions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker is Mr. Greg West.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Greg West. I live at 506 Charleston Place. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. But I'm here as a native of Fayetteville, a city I love, and I'm a proud parent of three young children. I'm also a three-term member of Cumberland County Board of Education. And while I'm not here in that capacity, those 10 years of service have given me, given me a unique perspective into the health, recreational, and emotional development of our children, and what physical activity and team sports can do for our youth. Our youth need more and better safe places to develop into the well-rounded, healthy young adults we desire them to be. Here's a few thoughts, additional thoughts. This past Saturday, 54,000 kids had gotten out of school on Friday, and it was great weather. This All-American City with over 200,000 residents and a county of over 300,000 citizens didn't have a public pool open for her children. Our only pool was closed for repairs, and learning to swim is a matter of life and death for our children. Swimming is the fastest-growing sport in our schools. Now our children have to get up at 5:00 AM and travel across the county to fight for lane times at Fayetteville State or the YMCA. We need to do better by them, and we can. We need to host regional events here instead of having to travel to bigger cities, and that's true with baseball or tennis tournaments as well. The plan is something for everyone. It's a good proposal. It has broad community input, and it's been thoughtfully prepared by your staff professionals, the experts in their fields, and consultants have helped benchmark it to state and national standards. Any delay in construction will be a delay for years to come. It's going to take years to build out anyway. Think back to the Crown Coliseum. It was controversial, and some folks still like to make fun of it, but look where we'd be without it. We just spent three days graduating 3,500 young adults in respectful, dignified, air-conditioned graduation ceremonies that were broadcast to soldiers throughout the world over the internet. No one thought of that when they passed the Crown Bonds. After 20 years in much smaller Greenville, North Carolina, the Eastern High School Basketball Championships have come back here. My point is that you can't even imagine all the events that would take place in the new Parks Facilities. It's just that a city like we want to be has facilities like that. It's expected and deserved. The Parks Bond is no different. The residents of Fayetteville deserve the right to vote on it. Please think big and think bold, and on behalf of the children, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, our next speaker is Mr. Mike Cutlerk.
How you doing? My name is Mike Cutlerk, 7001 Kalamart Drive. I'm a tattoo artist in North Carolina, Fayetteville here. Along with my fiance, we own a tattoo studio, which is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I want to address you today concerning the tattoo laws in North Carolina. Currently, there are no training requirements for a person to perform tattooing. These laws were adopted back in 1995, amended in 2002, and are seriously outdated. The current laws even allow the disposal of contaminated tattoo needles by ordinary trash collection services. Used tattoo needles are biohazardous waste and should be treated as such, including the disposal of. Television and media have exploited this one sacred art form, and with it created the idea that anybody can do tattoos. In North Carolina, that's happening right now. Money is the only criteria needed to be issued a tattoo permit. Each city and county is different in regards to a permit fee and a studio license fee, but there is absolutely no training requirement for someone to permanently alter another person's body. In comparison with nearly every occupation that exists, some form of training is required, and tattooing should not be excluded. OSHA mandates certain hazards present in the tattoo workplace regardless of what the North Carolina law states. Because each county has established its own tattoo permit fee, I don't find a reason why Cumberland County cannot add to that fee. OSHA approved training and refresher training specific to tattooing. I propose that my elected officials give this matter serious attention. Although there are risks when it comes to tattooing, tattoos and tattooing are safe if properly executed by trained individuals. But because of the current laws, there are untrained tattooists in this city right now exposing the community at risk. Regardless of your personal opinion of tattoos or people that have tattoos, I implore you to focus on the safety of this All-American war-winning city and not just the revenue that tattooing brings to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker is Mr. Aronimi Mohammed Smith.
I don't think Mr. Smith is here, ma'am.
Mr. J.D. Pone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is J.D. Pone. I'm not a resident of the city of Fayetteville. I am your current Chair of the Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. We have spent quite a bit of time, some years, some of us, seven, eight years, working on the proposed bond issue or the things leading up to it. And I'm here tonight to encourage you, to ask you to favorably consider placing this on the referendum, on the ballot as a referendum, so that the voters can decide. Needless to say, I was appointed by the county. I was extremely thoroughly disappointed when county commissioners dropped the ball and decided not to pursue this. I was excited when I found out that the Fayetteville City Council was considering going forward with your portion of it. This will, will certainly improve the quality of life for citizens of Fayetteville and for citizens outside of Fayetteville, even though it'll cost them. But still, we can take part in it. So I encourage you, I ask for your support to place this on the ballot so that the citizens can decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Our next speaker is Mr. Kerry Breckman.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Kerry Berg, 3213 Mesquite Drive in Fayetteville. This is in Mr. Crisp District. I am the current Chair of the City-County Joint Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. With our aging senior population and the increase in seniors, the current senior center is not nearly adequate. It needs to be upgraded. It needs to be replaced, which is a great part of the Parks and Recreation Bond referendum. And with that in mind, I would urge the council to please be committed to allow the citizens of Fayetteville to exercise their vote, whether or not they wish to have the bond referendum or not. They can get out and vote and exercise their opinion, let the citizens decide whether it be for or against the bond referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Wendy Michener.
Hello. I'm Wendy Michener. I live at 223 Hillside. And I'd like to speak to you about the post office again. I did read the op-ed the mayor wrote. I thank you very much. And I understand that there's a letter, but I haven't seen it yet. I guess it doesn't have all its signatures. But what I haven't seen, and what I would like to suggest and urge you to do, is you haven't asked for the backing of the citizens of Fayetteville working with this. That, the theory is that we live in a democracy. And the thing that really moves something, and this issue really has a lot to do with Congress. Congress is the one who can fix this. And you've got a whole lot of people in the city of Fayetteville and in the county of Cumberland. If you could ask them to call and to write and to email, the letter that you send, you're our representatives, and having a letter from you is really good. If you could ask the citizens to back you up, that after your letter, that they would be calling and writing and emailing. I think that, I know that that would have a powerful impact, that actually hearing from constituents in a united voice is the way to go, to get things to change in Congress. And I would really like to encourage you to reach out to the citizens and, and ask them to step up. And I want to acknowledge that that isn't something that we usually do around here. That it's something I've noticed, it's seven and a half years living here, is elected people tend to be very autocratic, and people who aren't elected tend to be very deferential and not speak. So you'd be asking them to do something that is not commonly done. Even though we're supposedly living in a democracy, people don't act like it very much around here. But I ask you, I encourage you to seriously consider.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming.
As I said, we have surpassed the 15 minutes. Do you wish to continue?
How many more do we have, ma'am?
Two, sir.
Let's just go ahead and see if we can get those real quickly.
Mr. Jerry Schrecker.
My name is Jerry Schrecker. My address is 1002 Hasbury Road. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for hearing me today. I owe the organizations, and most importantly, the citizenry to whom you are accountable, has watched and entertained accusations of racism regarding the police. To this day, you have failed to find its presence. I tell you now that not just racism, but sexual harassment also is rampant with regard to our police department. I do not understand how the city of Fayetteville's administration, with its many expensive investigations such as noble, has not found it. I found it for you. It is not racism and sexual harassment committed by our police officers, but rather the vilest and most contemptible racism and sexual harassment imaginable committed against our police officers. I give you now over 90-plus such documented instances and supported documentation. You are legally responsible for dealing with such racism and sexual harassment as mandated by EEOC, whose documentation clearly dictates that the harasser can be someone who is not an employee of the employer, such as a client or customer. Our own Fourth Circuit Court decision in EEOC versus Cromer Food Services makes it clear that once an employer is placed on notice of harassment of its employees arising from any source, it is under a legal obligation to promptly stop the harassment, even if this means threatening a customer relationship. I make such notice. Just as it is assured to the colored race to the enjoyment of all civil rights under the law, and to give that race the protection of the general government, law enforcement officers, regardless of color, are also guaranteed equal protection under the law. One cannot find a comprehensive policy observed by the city of Fayetteville dealing with these issues, or setting forth a methodology for dealing with racism and sexual harassment against our employees. The city of Fayetteville must, under the mandate of law, develop such protections for all our employees. I expect you to ensure that this is done with all the vigor and dedication that you have shown in entertaining Troy Wimms' absurdities, because in opposition, these instances are well-documented and real.
Thank you, sir. Lieutenant Cox, if you please, present to City Council. I'll just give it to the clerk, sir, to their other side. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker for public forum is Mr. Jimmy Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. Wanted to talk just a minute about the stormwater ordinance. We spent a lot of time and effort into We spent a lot of time and effort into that and tried to make it very flexible, but as anything in today's world, things change faster than we can keep up with. A recent example is the state's coming out with some new guidelines on pervious pavements, which are a big improvement over the detention ponds that we normally see on projects. The problem is the way that we have the bonding requirement in the stormwater ordinance is kind of a one shoe fits everybody. And in a recent case, the VA Center, we were looking at alternatives to try to minimize stormwater impacts and doing pervious pavements. We were looking at a potential cost of almost five million dollars in bonds alone, because we have to mimic the construction cost. I think it would be worthwhile for the council to give staff some direction that we may need to look at more flexibility in the bonding requirements to balance that out. If I had done the same thing with detention ponds, I'd probably only be looking at about five hundred thousand dollars in bonds. So it's a huge difference. When you're trying to do something that's actually an improvement, you're being docked for doing that, which I don't think is good practice. It's definitely not good economic development practice for the city. If I was a private industry coming into the town and I looked at that as being a requirement, and I see that five million dollar bond, I'm going somewhere else. So I would ask that y'all take that into consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Mayor, I apologize. I have one further speaker.
Okay, ma'am.
And Mr. Chris Bostock.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Chris Bostock. I live at four-two-four Kingsford Road in Fayetteville. I'm here this evening representing the, as Chair of the Fayetteville-Cumberland County Chamber of Commerce, representing our Board of Directors and our one thousand members. Wanted to emphasize our unanimous support and unilateral support for the upcoming parks bond levy. The endorsement came through the chamber's Government Affairs Committee, which was unanimously voted on by our Board of Directors earlier this year. That was issued in a press release to you last week. I wish to spend the remainder of my time talking about the Garner Economics Report, which was released in May, and I gave a brief briefing on in a work session last week. Two points on this. First of all, allowing this referendum to occur and its successful vote would add to the quality of place that you saw referenced in that report and be considered a reinvestment into the assets and to the infrastructure of our community. Second, I ask you to think back when you read the report of the worker flows piece. You would see that the amount of workers from two thousand and seven to two thousand and nine actually grew in our region during a very difficult period in our nation's economy. But notice that the number of workers that actually live and work in Fayetteville declined, while the number of workers that live elsewhere and work in Fayetteville actually increased substantially. I make that point that we not only have to bring jobs here in the community, we also have to bring their families so they live here in addition to work here. For this and several other reasons, I want to mention that the chamber is in support of the parks bond levy as a prudent public investment into our community's resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I have no further speakers.
Thank you, ma'am. And we appreciate everyone coming tonight, and this will conclude the public forum. And council members will now move to item six, which is tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask that we pull item six point one.
Okay. And Mr. Chris?
I'd like to pull item six point four, Mr. Arp.
All right, sir. Can we take that in the form of a motion to approve the consent with the exception of six-one and six-four? Is that okay?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chris. Everyone clear on that motion? May I ask for your vote, please? All right, that's unanimous, and we'll move now to item six point one. Mr. Arp?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council not award the contract for the purchase of four automated side loader refuse trucks.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Please give your reasoning, sir. Yeah, my reasoning is twofold. One, you know my position on, I think there ought to be a look at privatization of some of the services of the city. And as long as we continue to make capital investments in trucks and things like that, we're not going to take that opportunity. The second thing is, you know, I get reports back from citizens that these one-armed trucks are not efficient. And I have a photograph I'd be happy to share with council at a later point of just the last week where trash was drawn all over a resident's yard by the one-armed truck that picked it up and it couldn't handle it and it dropped it. Now, we got that rectified, but it took several council members getting involved to bring it to notice of people to get somebody back out there. So I'm just not in favor of moving forward to this till we have a chance to look at it more. And also, I don't recall this being presented. It might have been in the CIP. I just don't recall it being presented.
Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir. Well, we did look at privatizing this twice. It went out and it came back, and the prices that came back from the contractors were higher than what we were doing it for. You know, with the one-armed bandit, we have our complaints, and I received one today from a resident. They had seven or eight family members and one trash can, so they put the bags by the side. Of course, the one-armed bandit doesn't pick them up. Well, suggested you, I gave it a phone number to contact on a second trash can with such a large family. But when we take a look at our biggest expense is personnel, and then the workers comp issues and the safety issues, we looked at the one-armed bandits or whatever you want to call them, the one-armed trucks, as being able to improve city services without raising our taxes. So I will, I support purchasing these vehicles.
Other comments, council? Okay, the motion on the floor is not to award the contract for the purchase of four automated side loader refuse trucks. Let me ask for your vote on that motion, please. Okay, that motion fails. Those in favor, the motion, Mr. Chris, Mr. Arp, Mr. Fowler. In opposition, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Ms. Davy, Mr. Hare, and Mr. Massey. Is there another motion on the floor, council? Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve the purchase of the four automated side loader refuse trucks.
Have a motion and a second by Mr. Hare. Any discussion on the motion, council? May I ask for your vote on that motion, please? Okay, that motion carries. Those in favor, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Ms. Davy, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey. In opposition, Mr. Chris, Mr. Arp, and Mr. Fowler. Okay, item six point four, Mr. Chris.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to cede the land or donate the point-nine-two acres to the Cape Fear Botanical Garden, with the proviso that the city incur no present or future expense in removal of the fire tower.
Okay, modify the motion to include that caveat.
Yes, sir.
And have a motion and an appropriate second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on that motion, council? Okay, let me ask for your vote on that, please. Okay, that's unanimous. That's a good move there. Okay, council, we'll move now to item seven-one, which is tonight's public hearing. Let me read the guidelines for the public hearing, and I understand we do have a significant number of people to speak. First of all, each side will have a total of fifteen minutes to present your position, whether you are for or against. Individual speakers will have one time to speak and will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesman is designated, in which case the spokesman may use the entire fifteen minutes. When you hear the beep and see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately thirty seconds left of the three minutes. And when you see the beep and see the timer located on the podium blink and change from yellow to red, that means the full three minutes has expired. We ask that when your name is called, you come to the podium and state your name and address loudly for the record. And we'll begin with a presentation from Mr. Craig Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First public hearing we have before you tonight is case P twelve twenty-seven F. This is property located on Willowood Road. It's the proposed Liberty Hill subdivision just off of the King's Grant Development. It's currently a P and D zoning district in the county. Requested action is to go to an SF ten in the city. It's approximately a hundred and six acres altogether. This is an initial zoning, which is part of the next public hearing annexation petition. Here you can see where the property is located. Here to the north of the property, this vacant area is the right-of-way corridor for two-ninety-five. You've got Pine Forest High School here just to the north of that. And then you've got the remainder of the King's Grant Golf Course Development here to the south of this property. As I mentioned earlier, it is currently zoned P and D in the county. The owner has petition for annexation. Currently, it is undeveloped. As you can see, again, this is the school site here to the north, this area. Then we've got single-family or low-density residential here in the yellows. More residential here, a little higher-density residential condos, townhome-type development. And then the green areas being that of the golf course themselves. Land Use Plan calls for this area to be low-density residential, as you can see here in the yellow. Does call for some conservation areas here in the green, and again, the green here at the back end, but mainly low-density residential for this property. Last year in May, the TRC for the City Technical Review Committee approved conditionally the site layout that you see in front of you, a hundred and four, three hundred and four lots on this property. That was done prior to the adoption of the UDO, and they have a vested right of two years on this development plan that you see before you currently. The biggest issue with this property, as we all know, is the access. The main points of access are through the King's Grant Development. Those are the only accesses that are currently built. What you see before you are some other options that the city has looked at of places that could possibly be connections, some not nearly as really viable as others. All of them are going across properties not owned by the developer of the property here in question, but there are other options of what could be done to service those properties. Currently Shawcroft is the only connecting street through King's Grant to this property, and then it would travel all the way out to Ramsey Street where there is a stoplight. Staff has recommended that the property be, if it be annexed, it should become an SF fifteen district based on the SF fifteen fits with the existing lot sizes in the area. The adjacent lots in King's Grant, the single-family range from eleven thousand to twenty thousand square feet, the SF fifteen is right in the middle of that. But then you also take into consideration the smaller condo-townhome developments too that are adjacent to this area, which would lower the overall density of the properties that but this, the one in particular that we're looking at tonight. SF fifteen, the other, second reason is SF fifteen only allows single-family residential development, which does match most of the surrounding area. Under the current P and D development of the county zoning, it could either be developed under their, the county's R-ten standards, or as a P and D district, which does allow for both multifamily, single-family, and even commercial. Third reason is that the SF fifteen does allow for zero lot line, which does provide flexibility to the developer in lot standards with respect to environmental conditions and existing development patterns. The Zoning Commission had recommended that if the property is annexed, it should become an AR district or agricultural residential, based on the AR fits with the largest existing lot sizes in the area. The adjacent lots in King's Grant range up to twenty thousand square feet. The AR only allows single-family residential development, which does match most of the surrounding area as well. Are there any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Okay, any questions of staff at this point? Okay, sir, stand by. And before we open the public hearing, you will note there are two different agenda items, and the motion that we're dealing with right now, we would ask your comments to speak to the zoning discussion. Actually, the annexation is the second issue if we get to that. So the first one is the zoning. So if your comments would speak specifically to this question that's before the council at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Richard Wiggins.
And these are in favor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'm Richard Wiggins. I'm an attorney here in Fayetteville. My address is two oh-two Fairway Drive, Fayetteville, NC two-eight-three-zero-four. I will be the somewhat designated speaker for the proponents of this measure tonight. And I come here, of course, in favor of this rezoning petition and the subsequent issue of annexation, which was being petitioned by the owners of this property, which is, of course, the Andrews Road Company. Andrews Road Company is the owner of this tract. It's a North Carolina Limited Partnership owned by three families, longtime families in Fayetteville, the Paul Thompson Family, the Donald W. McCoy Family, and the Thomas McLean Now Estate. Al Cleveland is a general partner of Andrews Road Company. This tract was originally two-hundred-and-fifty-two acres of land, and unfortunately, in spite of Tom McLean's valiant efforts to keep DOT from splitting this property in two, that those efforts failed. And the DOT in two thousand and nine condemned fifty-two acres of this property, or forty-seven acres of the actual taking of the right-of-way and some other areas that became inaccessible because of the condemnation action of DOT. In any event, this road, I two-ninety-five, now splits the property almost in two. There's a hundred acres on the north side of the expressway and a hundred and five-point-three-four acres on the south side, which is on the north of King's Grant property. This King's Grant was developed back in the early nineties by my friend Saul Rose. When Saul Rose laid out this subdivision, he provided for three access points from King's Grant into the Andrews Road property. Those have been shown on the map by Mr. Harmon. Obviously, when he laid this out, he did it in accordance with the then-city standards requirements, and of course, everyone knew that to provide access to that property, it had to be, those access points had to be given. And everyone in King's Grant knew or should have known or would be constructive, would have constructive knowledge that access to this property was going to be had through King's Grant. Obviously, had I two-ninety-five not even been put there, I think the ultimate development of this and the ingress egress pattern would have been that those folks to the north near Andrews Road would have used that street, and the road to the south would have used the property of King's Grant to get out to, from Willowood Road to Shawcroft Road. That would have been the natural pattern, I think. As Mr. Harmon has pointed out, if this property stayed in the county as it is now, it could be developed under their P and D standards or R-ten standards, which would allow some almost six hundred lots or individual units in this area. That, of course, would be completely unacceptable and would not be good planning, would not be a good practice, would not be something that would be an asset to this city. Obviously, I'm not so naive as not to realize and understand that these folks here from King's Grant have a concern about... Kings Grant have a concern about the issue of traffic. We have shared that concern, the developers have shared that concern. We've had meetings with city staff, we've had meetings with, with traffic engineering, infrastructure folks here in Fayetteville. We have tried to figure out some logical alternative means of providing points of ingress and egress of this property, over and beyond access on these access points into Willerwood Drive and on to Shawcroft up to Ramsey Street. We've also had a traffic impact study done, and I must say that that traffic impact study shows pretty conclusively, and the track, and the city's engineering staff also has found that while there would be an impact on traffic, it would not be such that it would interfere with the orderly flow of traffic on Shawcroft onto Ramsey Street if it were properly signalized, as DOT, I think, will ultimately do at this point. And of course, there are some improvements that can be made to Shawcroft that will also be a benefit to this. So we have done what we can to minimize and to express concerns about this particular issue, but we don't think that it's the issue that has been presented by the Kings Grant Association. I received a letter from my friend and colleague Walt Tippett, who represents, I think, the association, suggestion that perhaps what could be done or should be done would be to put a overpass over I-295. That was the first I'd ever heard of that. I don't think that's a practical idea. It's not something that, obviously, that the owners of this property could ever do. While they did receive a settlement, well, I tried that case within settlement, and the award was $1.6 million to, for that taken by DOT, that would not even begin to dent the cost of putting an overpass over I-295. But beyond that, what the letter from Mr. Tippett did not emphasize or show was that, of course, they bought 52 acres, 47 acres of property from these owners. So it wasn't something they gave them to provide some type of ingress egress to this property. In, in deciding whether or not this zoning is proper, there is a provision in the ordinance, which is Article 31 G3 in the Unified Zoning Ordinance, which states that the council should consider the lands designated on adopted plans addressing the city's growth and development. That's been addressed by, by, by Mr. Harmon. This is a low-density type district. We have asked for R-10, or SF-10. We are now amending that request and say we can proceed with this development with an SF-15, which is a higher-density residential area. Number two is the land's current use. Of course, it's forest, but obviously, again, it's highly suitable for development. Three, the existence of a previously approved site plan. As Mr. Harmon said, there has been a site plan approved for this, this property, and if approved and brought into the city, the plan is to develop this into a 303 unit development, not a 600 unit development, which it could be if it were developed in accordance with what the zoning is now. That is certainly, I think, would not be proper, would not be something to the best interest of the city. And the character of the adjacent lands all around this property is all PND, and so this would be a higher density than what is around this property. Basically, we think this is a good plan. We've worked hard to make it acceptable to, and bring it up to, and it will be, obviously, a subdivision that would be constructed and built to a higher standard than what Kings Grant is built, because the standards of the city are now much more stringent. We strongly urge that this petition be accepted by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, how many speakers do we have in opposition?
We have eight speakers in opposition, sir.
All right, we have 15 minutes, and we'll begin with those in opposition.
Our first speaker is Mr. Leland Mo-Hagan.
I'm sorry, can, does anyone know that name? Ma'am, can you say that again?
Leland Mo-Hagan.
Okay, let's go to the next name, ma'am.
Next speaker is Mr. Sam Bright.
My name is Sam Bright, and I'm the president, or I live at 400 Swan Island Court in Fayetteville. I'm the president of the Kings Grant Homeowners Association, and I represent about 550 residents in the neighborhood. The reason the zoning commission did not recommend SF-10 or SF-15 is because they want to maintain the integrity of Kings Grant. Typical lots in Kings Grant, probably 90% of them hover around half an acre. They may argue that some of them are not half an acre, some of them are .48, .46, .37. .37 is 13, 100 smaller than half an acre. So basically, they are half an acre. More importantly, the lots in Kings Grant are about 100 feet wide or larger, except in cul-de-sacs. And on these lots, you will find high-end homes, probably 75% are brick homes, and they sell for large amount per square feet. The real issue here is this plat that was approved by the city about two or three days before you folks, which you had it up there earlier, you can see the picture. You approved, two or three, or you didn't approve, but the city approved it two or three days before the UDO passed by this council. This UDO would not allow this plan to occur, I don't think. So I see it as running up your credit cards two days before you file bankruptcy. It may be true, I mean, maybe legal, but it's not right. What they're trying to do on this property, I keep hearing the city say low-density. They want to put 305 lots on this property, 303 lots, and these lots are .2175 acres, which is well less than even a quarter of an acre. Two of these lots could fit in almost every Kings Grant lot. Also, they're only 70 feet wide. They're 70 by 125, very narrow. If you can just envision being at the beach and riding down where they cram all those houses together, and you can look inside, outside your window and look in your neighbor's window, that's what they're trying to put in there. My granddad used to say it's like putting 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. The difference is, the only way to get the potatoes out is through a straw, and that's Shawcroft Road, that little small road there. Okay? The last thing is, we have a homeowners' association, we provide amenities for the neighborhood, we provide a front entrance, we provide a guardhouse with eight cameras for security, we have common areas, we have park property, we have to pay for this. This property is not compelled to pay for this. There's only 400 residences in Kings Grant roughly right now. This will be another 300 using our amenities. This property is in Kings Grant, you've acknowledged that, the city has. When we got our letter, it said Liberty Hill in Kings Grant. They need to live up to the standards of Kings Grant if they're going to develop this property. I'd like to ask everyone who's against SF-10 and SF-15 to please rise. These people care about Kings Grant, they love Kings Grant, they could be at home watching Dancing With The Stars, but they're here with you guys to show you how much Kings Grant means to us, we can't allow this. So we want you to have integrity, which I know you will, you always have, and maintain the integrity of Kings Grant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, our next speaker is Mr. James Flood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm James Flood. I lived at 6208 Gregg Court in Fayetteville in Kings Grant. I'm here as a 20-year Kings Grant resident and homeowners' association board member, representing the concerns of many neighbors. We ask council for the following. Deny this SF, I guess it's now 15, rezoning request, and support your zoning commission's recommendation for a more restrictive AR designation for this property. Require any project developed on this property to be governed by current Fayetteville City uniformed development ordinances. Since the original Liberty Hill plan gained pre-UDO midnight-like approval from city staff, this without the developer yet owning the land or applying for city annexation. That process isn't planning, we believe that process is absurd. Require Fayetteville city staff to conduct a city-sponsored Shawcroft Road traffic and safety study. Many of us here tonight witnessed city staff testifying at the zoning hearing, advocating for SF-10 zoning based on a private traffic study, but later admitting never having been to Shawcroft Road. We have no sidewalks, but Shawcroft is regularly filled with dog walkers and joggers, cyclists, and moms with carriages. If they visited, your planners would have also seen landscaping delivery trucks regularly narrowing 27-foot-wide Shawcroft Road to one lane, forcing school buses and people to weave in and out. Be reminded also that Kings Grant, permitted by another Fayetteville city council in the late 80s as a planned neighborhood development, still has room for nearly 100 additional units unbuilt, and about seven acres of properly-zoned professional and commercial development that will all eventually spill onto Shawcroft Road, even without these additional homes. School bus safety, fire, ambulance, and police services need to be considered. Others tonight will speak of local school impacts and additional ingress and egress possibilities, but simply, we believe you cannot allow 300 additional homes to utilize an already dangerous 27-foot-wide road. Members of city council, we already have serious safety conditions on Shawcroft, and they're asked for you, therefore ask you to support AR designation for this property, plus make this land permanently subject to current UDOs by denying this SF-1015 request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Walt Tippett.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Walt Tippett. I'm here on behalf of Kings Grant Owners Association II. Its address is 238 McPherson Church Road here in Fayetteville, 28302. We have many capable speakers here tonight, and I'll do my best to avoid those topics that I know they will cover better than I ever could. And so the first thing I'd like to stress is that I don't think you want to approve this petition for rezoning, because it's not your, it's not consistent with your desire to encourage careful planned development. As you know, Kings Grant has been on, on your books and been the product of our development and our owners working with your staff since 1992. What this amounts to is a very recently contemplated development overwhelming 20 years of hard work by your staff and 20 years of responsible investment by these homeowners to overwhelm the singular access into Kings Grant. This petition would undermine your planning process by permitting a development large by any standard to overburden unsafely the only way to get into and in out and out of Kings Grant. I hope you agree that this is not the way you want to promote development in this community. Second, if you were ever inclined to undermine that planning process, I don't think this is the petition where you would want to do it. As my good friend and extraordinarily capable attorney, Mr. Wiggins, has already told you, he succeeded in winning a $1.6 million cash award because this owner had a condemnation action with DOT. That's great, except during that same proceeding, they had every opportunity to negotiate continued access through some means other than Shawcroft Road. Instead, I would respectfully suggest they chose to make it Kings Grant problem and your problem to recreate access that they could have preserved perhaps at some cash amount. Therefore, we made a singular phone call and one meeting with DOT to see if it may be willing to allow this, and in fact, they did. And I certainly don't know exactly how much a bridge costs, but I would respectfully contend no one else in this room does too. And therefore, you should allow further study to see if that's a reasonable alternative to that's what's been proposed to you today. Therefore, I'm here to tell you that those materials that are before you don't support doing this. They conclude the fire department is, does not agree with these protocols. And second, I contend that further study is necessary by any measure in order to encourage responsible development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, our next speaker is Mr. Gregory Bean.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Greg Bean. I live at 465 Shawcroft Road in Fayetteville, North Carolina. As I make my comments, I'd like all the members of the council to reflect back on the words in the invocation. And they said that, that, that the invocation asked us to do what is best for the city of Fayetteville. My neighbors and I are taxpaying members of the city of Fayetteville, and we ask you to do what is right by our neighborhood. I agree and concur with the comments of the speakers before me. As I noted in my notes to Mayor Chivoni and Mr. Bates, my council member, we are not opposed to development in our neighborhood. What we're asking for is smart development, compatible development that was described to us by the planning commission as maintaining the character and integrity of our neighborhood. We don't believe the proposed zoning allows that to happen. What we want is development that retains the character and integrity of our neighborhood and provides a safe environment for our families and our friends and ourselves as we live in our homes. Mr. Mayor, you know that I spend my, my day job dealing with development, and most often with the second, third, and fourth order impacts of unplanned development. I believe that you and the council members have the opportunity to get this development right, as stated by my, my previous speakers. Again, we're not against development, we only ask that it's done smartly. I would, would comment that if you agree with the petition that was, was presented by the developer, that you recognize that the onus will now be on the city of Fayetteville to fix the issues that we've identified and presented before you, that the secondary egress that is so important to get in and out of our neighborhoods. As you know, Mr. Mayor, I was trapped inside my neighborhood after the tornado. I barely made it out so I could join you on the flight as we looked at the tornado damage. Our road has been blocked from a single accident. Again, I ask that, that you look at the development that's planned, the impacts that's going to be on our neighborhood, and I hope and pray that it doesn't take a significant accident or fatality before the city recognizes that it has to address the safety issues that will be created on Shawcroft Road. I appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns with you, and again, as was stated in the invocation, I hope that you do what is right for the city and what is right for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, our next speaker is Mr. Wayne Tally.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for letting me address you. I'm addressing you as a homeowner in Kings Grant, and I'm very concerned with this planned development. I believe, as stated earlier, the UDO that is currently in place should be utilized for this development, not a two-day in advance. Get it in underneath the wire, I think that's kind of shady. Get it in underneath the wire, I think that's kind of shady in their part. I'm just going to state it as I feel it. I think they didn't think this through. And on top of that, there's another development, Patriot Park. The gentleman who's already put this plan up, he failed to address the issue of Patriot Park right next to Pine Forest. Next to that, they have Patriot Park Ansley. So they're already putting in additional subdivision on top of Patriot Park. How many homes does it take in that area? Now, with all these homes in that area, what are the community activities there? There's no community center. We've got 600 homes plus in that area. Nothing for children to do. Who's going to take that on? That's going to be the city. We already got a parks bond up here right now. So you want all these new children running the streets with nothing to do. In addition, I also pay dues for common areas, i.e. a pool. Once this area is put in, this development, there's nothing stopping them from utilizing the facilities which I pay for. They are not paying any dues to us, that I'm aware of, to support these common areas. So these children will be coming into our areas, which will be added crime, even though it's misdemeanor, menial stuff, it's still going to be there. They're going to be, the opportunity for them to go in there unaccompanied, unsupervised into our pools, which becomes a safety issue. Above and beyond that, recently, there was an increase in taxes. When they did the reevaluation, my taxes went up approximately $50,000. Okay? Yes, sir, it did. I can go get the paperwork showed to you. Now, with that being said, per taxes, my house is worth more in taxes than it is right now on the open market. That has not been addressed. With these new homes coming into place, my home's value is going to depreciate. There's nothing been said about the size of these homes. Will they be 2,600 square feet, 2,400 square feet, 1,800 square feet? There's no fences separating them from us. I, I personally disagree with them using King's Grant in their name because they're not King's Grant. The current values of home currently are going down. With these additional homes, we can't move our homes, not for what we paid for them. It's not going to happen. We're losing our prices now on our home. We're losing, losing, losing. How much do we have to lose? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the 15 minutes has been surpassed.
How many more do we have, ma'am?
Two, sir.
Let's, let's, let's do those very, very quickly, just to make sure we hear from everyone, if you could, the two remaining speakers. Go ahead, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mr. Thomas Duckworth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, again, thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Tom Duckworth, and I live at 917 Kensington Park Road in King's Grant, and I'm a member of the homeowners association as well. I'm not sure what I could add to the eloquent comments that are already given. I just wanted an opportunity to come up and go on record in opposition to not only this zoning request, but subsequent annexation request. So thank you, and I'll cede my time.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Betty Whittington.
And I am Betty Whittington, and I live at 301 Shawcroft. I am glad to be here tonight to address you and let you know we are a neighborhood. Please treat us like one. Thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing. Thank everyone for being here and entertain any additional questions or comments from council. Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir. Question, before make any motions or anything, Mr. Conan, can I ask you a question, sir? Mr. Zoning, Conan, you are requesting SF-10. Planning staff recommends SF-15. Zoning recommends AR. You heard the citizens tonight.
Yes, sir.
Would you accept AR zoning?
Answer, it's not workable.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions to come? Mr. Chris?
Mr. Harmon. Mr. Harmon.
Mr. Harmon.
Mr. Harmon.
Yes, sir.
Reading all that I've seen and listening to all that I've heard, there is no other alternative except egress and ingress on Shawcroft Road?
It's very limited other options for this development. You saw the map that we put up a while ago, the other options, they all go through existing developments or across properties. All the properties that they go across are not owned by the developer. You know, there, there are possibilities, but they're not very likely possibilities.
Let me ask you this, because Mr. Conan said he would not and could, cannot, he didn't say wouldn't, said he could not accept AR. If this board ruled AR and he does not accept that, what is his options?
I'm actually, I believe we had, if Mr. Conan does not accept their recommendation to AR, if they do that...
Well, let me ask this. Let me ask this. If, if that were the case, he could then withdraw his request for annexation. Is that right, ma'am? That then means that the property would revert under the rules and ordinances of the county, am I correct?
Yes.
In which case, if he went by county standard, he could build how many units on that property, sir?
It's 600-plus units.
600 and...
More than 600 units.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
I've heard a number of comments asking that, that we maintain the status of the neighborhood, current King's Grant. How is that currently rated, or at least when it was developed, and I'm assuming it maintains that under new city designations as a PND? Is that correct?
Yeah, it still is a PND.
It's a PND which allows for multifamily, which allows for multifamily and for commercial.
Correct.
So if we were to keep the status of the neighborhood similar to what it is now, then it would be to allow multifamily and commercial as well as single family. Is that correct?
Well, that's what's in the current King's Grant development, and that's what the county had zoned this particular property.
And was there ever any, any time and opportunity for there to be other avenues to enter into King's Grant besides Shawcroft Road?
There may have been years ago, you know, as the development was being developed or prior to DOT, you know, by and condemning the right of way.
Is Mr. Tippett still here? Were you involved at any time in that point? How long have you been involved with King's Grant?
Sir, I've bought and been involved with this project a very limited amount of time.
Limited amount of time.
I don't want to say anything that would mislead you. I believe that the initial plans were filed back in 91, might have been 92, and certainly, as Mr. Harmon started to say, growth in the area has impacted options available to anyone. We would stress, though, as I'm sure you know, it would be somewhat misleading of you to think that 600 homes were an option because if it were reverted to county, it would, I think, be reliant upon well and septic. And so, as a practical matter, under geology, for lack of a better word, the natural limitations on development of the property would probably be more consistent with King's Grants.
Actually, they wouldn't be limited to well and septic because PWC would have to provide services based on the request. So well and septic would not be a, would not be an issue there. My understanding is that there have been previous requests or there were previous opportunities for other accesses and other, and other points on King's Grant to come in, but that that was requested by the neighborhood not to be allowed, and that's why I was trying to find out if you were involved in that process.
Mr. Fowler, I would hate to mislead you.
Okay, now, they're shaking their head no, so that answers that question for me.
Sorry, Ms. Appleby.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bright, who is the homeowner association, sir, can I please ask you a question? And, and I direct this to you.
Sure, sure.
I, I'm directing this to you because you, the leadership of your homeowners association, I think you said 500 or more residents. Councilmember Chris brought up the standard, if you, if we were to vote AR, you remained in the county and, and the understanding that 600 properties could be built. Are you aware of that? Do your homeowners understand that? Are you willing to take that risk to say, you know, call their bluff and say, well, just go for it? What is your position as the homeowner association president?
Well, I think the AR is still in the city, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Was it what they recommended?
The AR clarified this, the AR, I think what was just said, if we went AR, they would be in the county.
AR is the city.
Clear this up. It would be in the city?
No, the, I think the quest of Mr. Conan was what he would agree with annexation if we separated it as an AR, and he said no.
Right.
So that means it would not come into the city as AR. It would not come into the city.
What I'm saying is the, what I'm saying is that the zoning commission recommended AR, and AR is city.
The way the process works, that's why the order is done the way it is, and this is not just done for this project, it's been done for every project since we, I guess, for the last six months anyway. Developer comes and makes a zoning request, then that person, if they get that zoning request, they proceed with the annexation request. If they don't get the zoning request that they want, they do not proceed with the annexation request. So what we're faced with tonight, no different than any other night, you just happened to be here tonight seeing this, is a developer makes a rezoning request, we have the opportunity to approve or deny. If we do not approve that, then he withdraws his annexation request. In that case, it stays in the county with a PND zoning that you can build 600 houses on.
Okay.
And they get water and sewer. So we're, we're facing some very difficult decisions.
I said it wrong. Thank you, Mayor, for clarifying that with the PND is what it would remain. So what, what I'm trying to get at, and, and I hate to put you on the spot, but, and not knowing how we're going to vote, you know, I don't know if you're a risky kind of guy.
There, there's two, two, I want to answer that in two ways. The first way is, you know, I don't know how this stuff works really, but I feel like if this man could build 600 lots on this property, he wouldn't be up here trying to rezone it to the city. So there's a reason that he wants to be zoned to the city. So I, I don't, there must be some, some barrier in the way or something, which I'm not sure what that is.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And this may be a little bit out of order, because you did ask for people that were members of King's Grant to stand up.
Yes, ma'am.
For the owners that are here, if you have the understanding that this stays in, this could potentially stay in the county and could be developed to 600, you call in a bluff, maybe, maybe he will, maybe he won't, if you would be okay with that, if you would be okay with potentially this property being zoned to 600 units, could you please stand up?
See, it's in the county now, so, so it's in the county right now, so that's what it is now. So he's requesting to be, I guess, annexed into the city, and we just want the right thing done.
Sir, he, he has the property being in the county now with the PND. He has the property rights without going before any board.
But he doesn't actually own the property.
That doesn't, the, the rights associated with that property, they can build 600 without going to the county commission, without coming to the city council, the property rights are associated with that.
We, I don't think we, we understand why we're here then, I mean, why, I mean, I don't understand, and I don't think they understand, you know, why we're even here if he could do that. So I guess...
Mr. Mayor, can I explain that real quick?
Well...
To make it, I mean, I think this can make it clear. The reason, the reason if you have a piece of property that you want to have density on, to have the density, you have to have water and sewer. Under the regulations at the time the request was made, you merely had to request annexation. If your annexation was denied or your rezoning was denied, the fact that you requested annexation gave you access to PWC water and sewer. So your, your, your contemplation that if it doesn't come into the city, that they won't get water and sewer, and therefore they can't build the density, will not hold up because PWC will be required to give them the water and sewer. That's the issue you're looking at, and there, there you are looking at the possibility of having PND where you would have the possibility for commercial, plus the possibility for multifamily, plus the possibility for more density. And this gives you, this gives you an opportunity for less density.
Is that it?
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, it's not, I'm sure it's not the news you wanted, but I do think that is it. Ms. Appleby, did you have anything else, ma'am?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm checking all the lights here. Mr. Bates, did you have something, sir?
Yes, sir. Well, let me say, Mr. Bright and King's Grant, I don't think anybody on council likes this any more than you do. Now, Mr. Bright, and there's a couple of them, Mr. Bean, Betty Whittington, I, I forget a lot of y'all's names, I see a lot of familiar faces. This has been a year and a week that you guys, King's Grant folks, city staff folks, Mr. Cohen's and his staff, we've been working on this for over a year. For a year and a week, we've been working on this. Just a couple of the issues is, part of it was is that the old policy, they got it, all you had to do was submit it, under the old policy, he did that. Like it or not, it doesn't matter, he beat the deadline to fall under the new policy, he beat that deadline. It's just like filing your taxes. If you got to pay taxes, you don't mail it in until the 15th of April. If you get a refund, you mail it in in December. I mean, that's the way that one went. With this one here, we could go AR to appease, appease y'all. I mean, we can make the motion for AR. If, if it passed AR, he'd just come up here and says, pull my petition for annexation. I don't want it to be annexed. So then he can go back and start building tomorrow up to 609 units on that property tomorrow. He doesn't need to go anywhere else, he's already filed the paperwork with PWC, he gets the sewer and water, he doesn't have to build it on septic and a well. See, that, then, we changed that policy, but we changed it after this was going through. We finally got that policy changed. So that's, that's part of that. We looked at seven different egresses, seven different options. The one that I thought we were going to have the best chance on was coming out through Kensington Park. Now, for us to do that, what we would do, I gotta watch my, we would have to do an eminent domain or condemnation, take them from a gated community, just like y'all don't want, take them from a gated community, open it up to the public. All those townhouses would be non-conforming because they're too close to the street. And then you would push all those cars out through that way and around through College Lakes and down through Chesapeake and over to Stacy Weaver to get out and around. But then you have what you don't want on Shawcroft, you're willing to throw over on Kensington. And Kensington is a gated and say there's legal issues that we'd have to go through that. You are correct. What is legal versus what is right? What is legal is, he met all the legal requirements. So we can either go SF-15, or we can go AR, or we could do whatever we want, and then he just says, I don't want it, pull my petition for annexation, and start building 600 units tomorrow. By going SF-15, we limit him to 318. I mean, that's 318 more that you want going through there, but it's half of what he can put through Shawcroft. So that's the way those goes.
Sir, the public hearing's over, sir. Mr. Bates, we need to kind of move on. Ms. Chris got a question, sir.
Okay. So there, I'm saying, we've been working on it for over a year, there's a lot of ins and outs legally, what we can and cannot do. All we're trying to do is minimize as the best as we can the impact of the development. I mean, that's...
Let me make this point, that if Mr. Conan reverted back...
Let me make this point, that if Mr. Koenig reverted back to the county standards and built 600 and some units, that traffic would still come through Shawcroft. We would receive no taxes, and yet we would be faced with the prospect of repairing Shawcroft Road. We're caught between a rock and a hard place. We can control the number of units on that property with SF-15. We cannot control it if we say AR and he says, I don't want annexation.
Say something?
Thank you.
Mr. Bates? Go. Okay, sir, the public hearing's over, thank you for your input.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to rezone to SF-15.
Have a motion on the floor to rezone to SF-15. Second motion, Mr. Fowler, and discussion on the motion, Mr., who is that?
That's me.
Just wanted to clarify, the motion would be for the initial zoning.
For the initial zoning. Is that correct, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay, Mr. Fowler? Ms. Applewhite, ma'am.
If I could just make a, make a comment, this is, I think our second meeting in a row where we've had residents come out and had similar concerns about development around As a real estate broker, and someone that came to this community and bought a modest $85,000 house, I was told at the end of the road, it would just stay wooded and pretty, and I didn't, I didn't know any better because I didn't have, I didn't, I didn't know anything about real estate at the time. So Mr. Wiggins made a comment about someone should have known that the, eventually there would have to be an egress from the property. But I can tell you that now, 15 years later, I have like 200 townhomes down the end of the street that used to be wooded, and my son learned how to ride a bike, but now there's 200 townhomes there, I mean condos there. So I, I'm understanding how you feel, and I'm just saying to the listening audience, when you buy property and you see grass, you see trees there, and someone tells you, oh, it's gonna stay there, you have a Realtor or an agent that says it's just gonna be nice and wooded, this caveat emptor, whatever you buy, you've got to expect something like this going in those wood, in that wooded area. That's just what happens in development.
Mr. Art?
Well, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate all the folks in King's Grant. I spent quite a few years there, over on Shawcroft Road, I know it well, I know many of you well, and many of you, and I worked together in a similar situation to this, when the back of the neighborhood was being developed. And unfortunately, Ms. Applewhite's right, you know, the development of a community like that, you can only act within the ordinance that you have to deal with, and we learned that. We learned that when we negotiated the front of the neighborhood, and we negotiated the park space, and we did the best we could to make a bad situation as palatable as we could. But at the end of the day, the back of the neighborhood got developed, and Kensington, and it's a nice area now, and it's good to see that Kensington residents have integrated fully into King's Grant. There was a time when there was much concern that they wouldn't integrate into the homeowners' association and those things, and it's good to see that's taking place. I think everybody would like to have a better solution, everybody would like to have a better answer. Mr. Koenig, and I wish deeply that you and your development group would work closely with the residents and do the best you can to help maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and I think they'll be great neighbors, and probably the best advocates for your new neighborhood as you develop it, if you can work with them.
Okay, the motion on the floor to approve the initial rezoning to SF-15, let me ask for your vote on that motion, please. That's unanimous, thank you, council. Move now to item 7.2 concerning annexation of Liberty Hill subdivision.
She doesn't, that means that just doing that doesn't even live there, she did it several times.
I explained to him, may explain to him, they think that if we live with AR, they would accept.
It'd be a good time to go out there and use that restroom.
No, you don't.
He just stood there and said he wouldn't accept AR.
I guess I'm, I know how they feel, I would have never bought my house, I would have never bought my house.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It is huge.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on the previous item, Mr. Herman has presented you with maps of the zoning case, and you're now familiar with the site that we're now looking at for annexation. You indicated your intention to initially zone the property as SF-15. Your next step is to hold a public hearing on whether to annex the property. I just want to let you know that the notice of the annexation public hearing was published on Friday, June 1st, and we've checked again, and the owner has been confirmed to still be the Andrews Road Company, so we'll say the petition is sufficient, that was as of Friday, and all other statutory steps have been followed. There's plenty more information I could give you, you got it in your packets, but at this point, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Nash? Nash, excuse me. Okay, sir, stand by. We'll open the public hearing, ma'am.
Sir, our speaker, speaking in favor is Mr. Richard Wiggins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of Andrews Road Company, based upon the prior action of council, I respectfully request that this tract of land, 105.43 acres, be annexed into the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, there are no further speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and entertain any additional questions or comments from council. A motion, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the annexation for a continuous area known as Liberty Hill subdivision effective today.
Second.
Consistent with the prior action of the zoning.
Yes, sir.
Kind of tie that in. You okay with that, Mr. Fowler? Okay, sir. All right, we have a motion to approve the annexation, any discussion on the motion? May I ask for your vote, please? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, that concludes our public hearings, and we'll move now to item 8.1, which is presentation of our 2012, 2013 budget ordinance. Mr. Bauer?
No, I don't think I will, I'll wait.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to thank the council for giving me the honor to present to you tonight a recommended budget. Wanted to make it clear that the budget that we're recommending tonight has been revised from the initial recommended budget, based on feedback from council, and we'll go over that information briefly this evening. Just to remember a little bit, we went through a little bit of a different process this year, a process which engaged the department heads a little more directly in giving you information regarding what kind of resources they'd be looking for as part of the organization. As part of that conversation, you actually heard from our police chief regarding some studies that actually identified the need for 28 additional staff, and that became something that was of significant interest of the council. We went through four budget workshops and responded to several questions of the council, that information is available on our website to the public as we went through that process. Of course, the two biggest changes in the revised budget are the impacts of Gates 4's first annexation, and then the action from the general legislature to de-annex that property, and then, of course, the police additions that we've, I alluded to earlier. Some initial, I guess, other initiatives, they're included, we do have the positions for the ramp program, we have police personnel, we had the RMS manager recommended by the noble report, and then we had the new positions that came out of that new initiative process and request of council, which has 10 positions being added this year, and additional 18 positions being added over the next five years. That total investment over that period of time will be about $2.8 million, an additional investment for police personnel. Now, if you were to carry that out over 2033, that time period that we're talking about later regarding the park bond issue, that'd be an investment over that period of about $54 million in police resources that we're making the decision tonight, potentially, to invest in our community in providing improved police services. The other priority the council had established was looking at compensation. The recommended budget tonight keeps our commitments for the police pay step plan, provides a merit increase, and also reserves some funds for future allocation as we move through that discussion with council in later days. It is a balanced budget, it is a budget that does not include any increases in taxation, and as I mentioned earlier, does add significant investment in added police personnel over five years without increasing the tax burden on the public. This is just the summary information we provided to council earlier. Again, the public can take a look at this information and go into more detail in our budget chronicles, and look at all the questions that council asked and how they were answered. The changes that you may see if you were to compare this to the previous presentation that we made are based on those two large items, which is the de-annexation of Gates 4, and the addition of the police personnel over time. You'll see that change most reflected in the fund balance number on the third column at the bottom here, that's 3.9 million is projected fund balance use, that number was around 2 million when we first recommended the budget, so that has gone up. It's still below, however, the projected fund balance use of last budget, so we're still putting ourselves in a better financial position than we were last year at this time. Operating expenditures, just a summary there, slight difference, again, those differences are less expenditures for Gates 4, a little more expenditures for police. Also included in the budget proposal tonight is the Public Works Commission budget, and this is the summary of those. We have the fleet maintenance internal service fund there at 7 million, water and wastewater, and of course, the electrical operations funds for a total budget of $343 million. This is a summary of some of the ways that the Public Works Commission budget supports the city's funding. The one number that has changed there is that top number, which is part of the change in the way we're funding police personnel over time. And then the recommendation is that we go ahead and adopt the budget ordinance, the capital and information technology plans, the capital product ordinance, and amendments there, too. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Sir, thank you. On behalf of the council, we want to thank the staff for their hard work in pulling this together, and I know we do have some additional items we'd like to discuss, and we talked before the meeting that every council member, if you would like to propose some changes, we want to discuss that fully, and then kind of see where the council is on that particular item, and then we'll go through as many as people have, and then at the end, we'll just wrap everything into one kind of anonymous, anonymous bill, however you spell that. And we'll start with Mr. Chris, sir.
Mr. Bauer, in the capital improvement plans, the item of Legend Avenue, there's 125,000 in this fiscal year, what will that 125,000 be used for?
$125,000 is for the signal, a new signal, at Legend and Sycamore Dairy.
Thank you.
Ms. Applewhite.
Mr. Bauer, in our last work session, we received a briefing from Mr. McElrath, human relations, in regards to the limited English proficiency program that we're implementing here in the city to reach, to reach out to our Hispanic citizens. I did send you an email late, and it was in regards to any funding allocations for printing, because part of that outreach would be providing handouts of our core services and printouts. And when I spoke to Mr. McElrath, and I don't see him here tonight, he indicated that he had a concern that if there was any funding for printing, so my question is to you, is there somewhere in the budget that funds have been allocated to assist our human relations department with implementing the LEP under Title VI of the U.S. Code?
Well, actually, answering the question that you just asked, which is, are there funds available to assist them in implementing the LEP, the answer to that question is yes. We do have funds in a number of operations to actually hire interpreters, if necessary, consistent with the plan. We are also, as we discussed with council, looking at ways to provide those services at no cost. We have a lot of employees who volunteer to interpret, and we're cataloging that resource, which is a free, well, at least a low-cost resource. Of course, we're having somebody interpret, they're not doing their regular job, but that's the resource we'll use first, but we do have additional resources for interpretive services in each operational budget.
His concern was that he wouldn't be able to fully implement without having a printing budget, I'll just get right to it, just as the county has, just as other municipalities have actual brochures in Spanish, you walk in, pick one up. His concern was that there had not been any money specifically allocated that he knew of for printing costs. And I'm trying to figure out, is there a printing budget that he can, like, pull from, or would you say that money would need to be allocated for printing costs to support LEP?
One of the questions you asked during the last work session, council member, was for an estimate for the cost of doing translation of some of our standard documents or providing that information.
And printing.
I would expect that that estimate would include printing, we have not completed that task yet.
So, so is the plan that he's gonna come back to you and say, I've got the estimate, this is what printing is gonna cost, and then you're gonna make, maybe transfer something over from the general fund to support that?
We would have a conversation with council, our commitment during the last conversation was to come back to council with that cost estimate, and provide the council opportunity to give us further direction about whether we should move forward with finding funds to make that happen.
Okay, and, but if the council says, yeah, we wanna, we wanna do the right thing, we wanna print some things out, you would go into our savings and account with Lisa and find us some money?
I would bring you the options to do that, sir.
Yes, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Do you have any more, ma'am?
That's it.
Okay. Any other, anybody have any other direction on the budget?
Yes, sir, one more question.
Okay, Ms. Chris.
My understanding is, obviously, we have a print shop, if you will, for, and then each department pays for the printing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Massey?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that the budget is, in fact, a plan. If as time goes on, we find that we have additional needs, the bottom line is that we will make adjustments and changes that will, as best we can, address those positive things that we're, that we're talking about. We cannot foresee everything that's gonna happen tomorrow. I want to thank Kristoff, Lisa, the staff, Chief Burgomine, all of you, for the work that you have done in putting this together, and I will be supporting it.
All right, let me ask for a motion from council, please. Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, motion to adopt the budget as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, any discussion of the motion? May I ask for your vote, please? Okay, that motion carries, those in favor, Mr. Chris, Mr. Bates, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davy, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey, Mr. Fowler, and opposition, Ms. Applewhite. Okay, we'll move now to item 8.2, which is Parks and Rec, resolution for preliminary authorization for Geo Park Bond Referendum. Mr. Gibson here?
Yes. You didn't buy no new suit for tonight's presentation, did you? All right, all right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council, I appreciate this opportunity to come back before you. What I want to do tonight is, I've changed up the PowerPoint presentation a little bit to give you a little bit more history, to give you a little to give you a little bit more basis of of where we came from and how we got there. So, I want to make sure that the, that you follow me. And what what you have on the screen now, um, is the basic, the five basic, uh, the big projects that we have, the Neighborhood Aquatic Centers, the Tennis Complex, the Multipurpose Aquatic Center, Cape Fair River Park, and the Sports Complex. Back in two thousand and six, um, when the two departments, the uh, the county, which is the district and the city, uh, got together, they wanted to do a comprehensive master plan. Um, so in two thousand and six, that was adopted uh by both boards, the county commissioners and the city council. And how we got to that point was the five public meetings, the county-wide telephone surveys, interviews, and stakeholders. Um, and all of that came up to about eighty-two million dollars. But the most important thing that I wanted to bring out in this meeting was it's is what they recommended and how they broke down that eighty-two million dollars. Um, there was renovations, land acquisition, park development, special use facilities, that all came up to this large number. Uh, there was a forty-seven thousand dollar uh action plan, five-year action plan that was done. And what we did, uh, Parks and Recreation and its partners, is that we took that that executive summary and said, okay, what can we do that have the ma- the most major impact on the community and provide the greatest service uh uh for the least amount of uh taxes uh and get us the greatest bang for our buck? So, we came up with this uh county-wide plan. Um, as you know, now, the county um decided not to pursue their end, uh, and and we just, uh, and what Mr. Pone said, we just appreciate the the fact that the city council would take this up um and venture into this force. So, we moved on um with uh what we believe the elected officials for the city uh and what would give us the uh, the major impact uh is our multipurpose aquatic center with a senior center, Neighborhood Family Aquatic Centers, the Cape Fair River Park, um, the Sports Complex, the uh Skate Park, Neighborhood Community Parks, Greenways, existing access to um um parks and building renovation, parkland acquisition, and planning and design. One of the things I want to make sure that the, that uh you understand is, when we, when we did this plan, we wanted to make sure that there was a reason to say yes, that we went through everything that we could possibly do um to make sure that the department had come up with any um existing problems that would cause us issues not to go forward. So, we went ahead and did a structural plan, and in that structural plan, it had project goals, project scope, activities, construction costs, operational costs, anticipated fees, revenue potential, cost recovery, target use demographics, uh, primary and secondary service, and um, and we presented that in a book that we gave to the commissioners and the council probably about maybe three months ago that had a breakdown of all that structural plan per item. So, we would anticipate probable costs. Uh, this is a collage of what we think those facilities would look like. Um, you can see that everything um that we have, the tennis center, just to give people a view of what we think we um, we need in this community. Um, there's some more pictures, a skateboard park, existing river park, greenways. Now, this this slide, I think, is one of the 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 most significant slides that that we have. It gives us tremendous information from the two thousand and ten census plan. You you, the first thing, one of the things that that I hear from the community is, uh, this community can't support such a grandiose plan. Um, it's too big. Uh, well, if you look at the numbers on the census plan, and and this is one of my little pet peeves, and I and I I say this to a lot of my friends, is uh Fayetteville is a town that a city's growing up around. And if you don't pay attention to what you're doing over the next four to five years, you'll figure out that you're in a city, and you won't have any amenities that cities have. And if you look at what we did when we were going through this plan with the, with the twenty census uh numbers, twenty-ten census numbers, you can see that children um and youth ages twenty, zero to twenty, number about a hundred and five thousand in this community. Uh, family forming, twenty-one to twenty to forty-four is a hundred and eleven thousand. Mature adults, forty-five to sixty-four, seventy thousand, and the retirement age is thirty-one thousand uh people. And and that number is only going to go up. I mean, over the last couple of months, um, just having the the information that we just went over with King's Grant, um, people don't build three hundred um uh home subdivisions and nobody move into them. That that just doesn't happen. People don't spend that kind of money. So, somewhere these people are going to come to live in these communities. Um, if you look at the population within the city, you can see that we're two, two, two hundred and eight thousand um Fayetteville-Cumberland population. The total is three hundred and nineteen thousand, and the number, that regional population number is the one that I always point to the most when I'm talking to people, is that there are forty-seven thousand people who live on our borders who use our services, who don't pay taxes in the city. And if you look at the total number from a regional standpoint, and uh you you hear that more on the news now than you hear anyplace else, is uh Fayetteville is becoming a regional um service provider, and Parks and Recreation will be no less than that either. We will become the regional provider for this community, and you look at that number, and that number's three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And this was in twenty-ten, I'm pretty sure it's going up since then. Um, households with children, um, out of that total number, there's eighty-six thousand um that have children. Uh, non-family forming is thirty-three, total households, uh, a hundred and nineteen thousand. And you can see what I've mentioned before is that uh, that that ten, five to ten-mile radius of people who just sit on our borders. One of the things that we've done is that over the past probably ten, maybe, maybe twelve years, um, the city has uh undertaken um land acquisitions um for uh our future parks based on what we went through in the um, in the master plan. And this next slide shows where we believe these facilities and the improvements and renovations should go. Um, you can see um that we've uh, we believe that we've um put them in areas based on where our land purchases were and where we believe the future should go, based on the master plan um throughout the county, through, I mean, throughout the city. Um, in our, on our major thoroughfares and arteries, where our density has shown up in our populations, uh, especially out in the western part. Um, if you look at the map to the west in the, in the three fourteen and the three oh four, um, in the uh, to a three oh six uh zip codes, you can see that we have uh three pools, a tennis center, we believe, that we could locate, and three neighborhood parks based in those areas. Um, currently now, we're working on a um, a sports complex out with the school system on Century Circle. And I think one of the things that happens um is that our school partnership doesn't get a lot of credit. People don't know about it until we do something. Um, I had a phone call the other day from a gentleman who wanted to know would they have access from Parks and Recreation to the uh new Century Circle Middle School uh gymnasium. Um, and I told him without, with, without a doubt, we would have that access. So, as far as uh the the amenities uh in our most highly dense area, our growing area, we're paying attention to it, and we're adding as uh, as many amenities as we can, as fast as we can. You can look at, this is another map uh that I wanted to make sure that people understood. This is our vicinity map for our our outdoor pools, and what those circles represent is a six-mile radius. And from the center of that, of those circles, um, from any point on that, on that map, on on the map you have there, you should only be one point five miles away from any neighborhood pool or aquatics facility in this, in the city limits. Um, the small pinkish circle, I hope I got the color right, uh, is our existing pool over at uh Seabrook Park off of Langdon Street. Uh, but you can see that uh, and 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 just give you a quick, a quick uh understanding, our normal service area for Recreation Center is one point mile in the urban area, one point five miles. And what we did was, we said, well, let's go ahead and double that for a pool so that we can get that density up a little bit more, so we can service more people, um, so we we can have that kind of economic impact. So, we went, we we, we went up to three point five, uh, so you have that six-mile radius around the uh, the neighborhood pools that we plan to um, if we're blessed, plan to build in this community. Now, you can see, here's another proposed uh renovation, the facilities that we would upgrade. Uh, the Brentwood School Park is in the western community, um, in a highly dense area, Clark Park, uh, Dorothy Gilmore, um, special uh, special needs facility, the Martin Luther King Park, Massey Hill uh Recreation Area, the Mazrick Park, and then Seabrook Park. We would want to make some more upgrades to that neighborhood pool so we can handle um that, the the stress that it has now, um, with its parts breaking now, so. Uh, this is what our, our initial proposal was with the, the county-wide proposal. Um, you can see that that number was about sixty-five million dollars. Uh, we have since um gone back and redid that. And here now, you have uh bond construction costs for city projects. Um, you can see that that number now is ten million dollars, basically ten mi- ten million dollars less, around fifty-five million. And you can see what we proposed our construction, probable construction costs would be um for those facilities throughout the uh, throughout the city. Um, this is, this is a very good map, I mean, a very good slide. Uh, it it, it helps people sort of um understand what their commitment is to this uh bond proposal. I had phone calls all week uh from citizens who saying, you know, you're asking me to spend forty-six million dollars. And I said, no, ma'am, we don't expect for you to pay the whole forty-six million dollars back. If you look at this slide, you can see that the property value, if you have a seventy-five thousand, hundred thousand dollar home, um, your uh per-month tax would be about a dollar and forty-one cent or a dollar eighty-eight. Your annual taxes would be about sixteen dollars to twenty-two dollars uh a year, and your lifetime debt over twenty years uh would be roughly three hundred and twenty dollars or roughly four hundred and twenty-seven dollars um over the course of the life of this bond, based on your, your property value for homeowner. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that the council and uh the public who are uh listening or looking at this uh presentation now, one of the things that, when we went into this, is that we wanted to make sure that the facilities that we built had some kind of economic impact and that they could support themselves uh to some degree. Uh, we believe that we've put together um facilities that the uh whole uh city can use, that uh the uh Conventions Bureau can go out for us and and market, um, that we can put heads in beds and also provide a service throughout the community of of a, of a higher level um throughout our communities. So, I want to make, I don't know how much I can emphasize that, uh, but um, we, I don't believe that we should ask taxpayers to continue just to fund another rec center, that we should build things that support themselves. And we believe we've done that with these five major projects. Um, what we would like to do um tonight is recommend that council um uh make a motion to approve the proposal resolution um to direct staff to place a general obligation bond referendum to uh finance various parks and recreation improvements for the city on the ballot in February twenty thirteen, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure we have some, sir, I think, uh, Ms. Davy, then Mr. Art.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, um, thank you for your presentation and um staff and numerous conversations that we've had. Um, based on the last slide here, um, which is a recommendation, um, I would like to direct staff to place a general obligation bond referendum to finance the various parks and recreation improvements for the city on the ballot in February two thousand and thirteen.
Yes, Davy, if we can just ask, I think some other council members might have questions, so we'll just kind of put that, we'll come back to you, ma'am, sorry, that's, that's okay.
She's putting the motion out.
No, that's no problem. Mr. Art, uh, question, sir?
First off, I want to say thanks to Michael and everybody that worked on this plan, and there's a lot that's gone into it. And I want to thank Mike and uh uh Mr. Christoph for the tour Friday. I appreciate you taking the time to do that. In two thousand and six, when this was put together, um, I guess a question I have is, why wasn't action taken on it then? Um, and forgive me, but I just, I don't recall, but in two thousand and six, you guys put this plan together. Why didn't we take it to a referendum then?
I think the eighty-two million dollars had a lot to do with that. Um, there was no, I think the plan was just to adopt it, come back, and then figure out a way to get the action done. I think about three years ago, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department tried to do a twenty-three million dollar uh bond referendum. They went to the county to ask them to do that, and that was rejected.
I guess, my following question is, we've, we've gone to the public before with with these referendums, have we ever been successful?
No, sir, we haven't.
From your perspective, why have we not been successful?
Well, uh, I I talked to my colleagues a lot about that. Um, uh, when we go to directors' workshops up in Raleigh, um, and you, and you talk to people around the country, from what I gather, the most, uh, the city of Fayetteville or Cumberland County was, and I want to be delicate about this now, um, our mindset, you know, wanting to be a thriving community, um, having that, 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 the ability for young people to um, to to live a quality life, our seniors are more active now, um, we just have a growing community now. Everywhere I go, uh, and I hear negatives, too, but when you sit down, you talk to people about uh your Parks and Recreation, um, their, their intent is to live a better life. And I think our community has come to the point now where they're going to choose to live a better life, and they want the amenities to live that life. So, I think we're here now. I don't think we were there uh twenty years ago or or fifteen years ago. I think we're there now.
The uh, just, just a question, and I meant to ask you this on Friday, and I, and I fell to the gateways for the city. You, your, the Parks and and Recs Department, y'all manage that?
Yes, sir.
Is that part of the pa- package, would that be a part of the upgrade that we see in the Parks and Bond referendum? Or is, is that part of your maintenance renovation piece, or?
No, um, and and I don't know if, uh, I have personal views on gateways, um, but that, that's not a part of this. Uh, I would love to be able to come back um at another later date and talk about gateways. I think we can do a tr- a a lot better job with our gateways. I think we could use natural entry features um to do, to to introduce people to the city limits. But no, sir, that's not a part of this uh, this bond package.
And then the last thing, you you, you stated that you you feel more confident this can go through now as opposed to in previous years. One thing, one, one thing that helps make you more confident?
Diversity.
Diversity.
We have a, we have a tremendously diverse community. We have uh people who have different interests. Um, I I'll give you a prime example. When we built the uh, the Cape Fair River Trail, um, we had tremendous opposition. Why would you put a road, why would you spend five million dollars putting a road through the woods? Um, and uh, working with uh Jerry Dietzen and the uh former boss, Robert Barefoot, i- it was a, a step on faith or leap on faith to say, if we build this thing, we believe that this community will use it. And to this point now, the Cape Fair River Trail is probably one of the the greatest things that this community has as an asset um for our citizens to go out and get away from traffic, to get away from stoplights, and go out and just walk and not be harassed by uh the urbanization of our community now. So, the diversity in this community that we have now, our population growth, tells me that this kind of plan now um only gets more expensive. It doesn't get any less expensive, and it only grows for our citizens if we don't do something now.
Thank you.
Mr. Hare?
Mr. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
The more I hear you talk about this plan, even if I have some things, some concerns or some questions that have come to me over the weekend, um, the more I like it. I I really have appreciated the presentation, at least the last two.
Thank you.
And those are the only two that I've really, really, really heard. I guess my ears, my eyes open on those two presentations. So, I I thank you for the hard work, and you have done an excellent job. Um, I think it's page seven, I don't know if it's slide seven, I counted the pages, but the ones with the circles?
Yes, sir.
I think you said that, now, this right here is Fayetteville?
Yes, sir, that's our, that's our city limits.
Okay, that's all the Fayetteville here.
Yes, sir.
And if I understood your question, and if I understood your presentation, that everyone in Fayetteville, wherever these circles are, where we're going to do something major, they will have, what, a mile, one? major, they will have, what, a mile, one point five, a mile and a half travel?
Well, if you, no, if you go back to the next slide, that slide is of the aquatics facilities, the neighborhood pools, that's, that's where everybody will have, will be no more than one point five miles away from an aquatic facility throughout the city.
And, okay, and that's anywhere within the city?
Yes, sir.
And within that type of facility, there will be?
Well, that's just our, our pools, well, and, and the design of those pools are for kids from, basically if you can walk, because they call them zero entries, and we'll design those, those aquatics, similar to what Seabrook has, but just a little bit bigger, because in those areas that we're going to go into in the western and the, especially now, in the northern part of Fayetteville, that those, those aquatics, neighborhood aquatic facilities will be a lot larger, that's why we have money to renovate Seabrook's area to make it a little bit larger based on population growth. But that, only thing that I, the reason that I put that slide back in was to show the community that we're geographically, we're looking at the community with population growth and how we place the, the different neighborhood parks, neighborhood pools, so that people can get to them, that they have access.
Okay, 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 now, the, then the one that I'm looking at just before that, explain that one to me, those circles.
Well, all, all that shows is that is our total project list, and where the, where we believe that those projects should go throughout the community, and if you look at the sports complex, the city has already bought fifty acres out on Fields Road on Exit Forty-Nine to put that sports complex, the Cape Fear River Park, the city has already purchased thirteen acres down on the river on Persson Street, you go up to the multipurpose Aquatic Center, the city already owns sixteen acres in Mazrick Park on Bragg Boulevard, the major thoroughfare, so we already own that, we don't have to go out and buy that, and then if you look at where we place the pools and the neighborhood parks, that's the little green squares, and then the little red dots are the renovation plans to existing facilities, so we just wanted to get, make sure that people saw how encompassing this plan is or this, these projects are, that we touch every zip code, and that's mainly how we sort of work, because when you go through the zip codes, then you, you know you're touching everybody who lives in the community, and in every zip code, based on the master plan, we have projects going on and our upgrades, our renovations.
And that depended on, when you say the zip codes, that depend, you looked at that in planning by the growth within those zip codes?
Oh, no doubt about it, I mean, and, and I want to go back to this now, the economic impact or the ability for the facility to, to generate revenue was a major part of what we did, you didn't want to go out and just build something and then come back to the council or go to Kristoff and say, look, yeah, we need a little bit more money, we wanted to make sure that we put these pools or these parks or these major facilities in places where we could, that the people work, you don't want to put it someplace where kids can't get to it or parents can't get to, and in, in, in your first book we gave you, we gave you that breakdown so that you could see in the two eight three oh six and two eight three oh four community, there was seventy-three thousand families living in that area, and that's one of the places where we were going to put a pool. Well, basically in that area, there was eighty, well, I think it was seventy-three percent of that, of those homeowners or families had kids, and that's, that's, that's borne out by our school population and the amount of schools that they're building in that area, so, but we, we looked at that completely, we wanted to make sure that we just wasn't putting oasis's out there where nobody would go to them.
And my last comment to you, I, I deal, I keep in contact with my communities a lot, I have hundreds and hundreds of emails, and I sent it out and I asked them to give me their input back on what they thought about this, I even sent them to the website and what, you know, how, where to click at and whatnot, and out of all that came back, the majority of it was support for, regardless of what goes on tonight, they supported what they saw coming toward the community, so again, thank you.
I thank you.
Yes, sir.
Miss, let's see, Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Mayor, I think my question may be for Lisa Smith, I'm not sure, so, stand by, my issue is more of priority for our city, and, and my number one priority is the issue of crime, I think everyone on this council made crime a priority, at least addressing crime when we campaigned, and, and I'm certain that's one of the things that we hear from our citizens. An amazing question from one of my citizens, it said, Ms. Applewhite, I'd be willing to pay a tax a penny or two if you, if it were a public safety tax, and asked the question as to whether or not our efforts here could be a bundled effort, a public safety slash Parks and Rec, so, we're not just talking about pools, we're talking about police. So, I'm wondering if we had the ability, if this were to pause for a second, Lisa, is it possible to have a bond on the ballot that not just addressed Parks and Rec, but perhaps had a small entity, how many, how much are we spending on this per, per a hundred dollars?
Two point two five cents.
Okay, so if we could have like a half a cent or something like that, attach this package and put this on the ballot, Lisa, is that possible to mix uses or is this one for Karen, Ms. McDonald?
Actually, council member, I think I'm the one?
Okay, then city manager, yes, sir.
And, and I say that because I've worked with both of these, because it is a mixed question between both our legal staff and our bond counsel and our finance staff, and, and I'm not sure I know all of it, but I'm going to tell you the information I do have, and it's going to have some relevance, I hope, to the question you have, the challenge here is that you don't need voter approval to raise your tax rate, you have the authority to do that without voter approval.
Thank you.
The reason why this has, has to go to the public is because we're authorizing geo-debt.
Right.
And it is that question that is going to the public, truly, they're answering that question. The question of what we do as far as tax to pay that back is information that goes along with that question, okay?
So, but my question is just really simple, can both be on the bond, I know there's a long answer, I want the, I want the bond for dummies.
You can, you can put anything you want on there as far as information, but what they're approving is the bond issuance, they're not approving the tax rate.
So, for example, this is the discussion, about a month ago, it was longer than a month ago, we did, we had been discussing a police substation for quite some time, and I, I read over the package, and I think there were some projections in terms of costs, three million, five million, and seven million, very preliminary, but, you know, one end we use existing building or do a lease, lease option, and on the other end, we find property and we build it, so you had the three to five, seven million dollar play in there. So, my question is, in west, in western Fayetteville, and unlike council member Hare, I did not get one phone call that was supportive of this, they were more interested in safety, security, and, and, and filling our police allocations, I know we are hiring eight or so, whatever the number is this year, but they want that whole twenty-seven, so we, just a very intelligent question, could we put it on the same, on the same vote? That appears to be yes, because you said we can put anything on there.
As far as what you wanted to do with the tax rate, you can put that on there, if you wanted to incur, authorize more debt, and you've talked just there about?
Or take some of this off and replace it with a police substation, so if we did do fifty-six million, we did forty-five and put a substation, could we mix that up if we wanted to?
Assume you could.
Okay, now, the next question I have is, I believe that there are three bond, I'm not smart on this, three bond, three bonds that will be approved in this, correct?
Three issuances.
Three issuances, is there a way, because it feels like this is an all or nothing situation, is there a way on the ballot to have listed three separate bonds, bond A is going to get this thirty, twenty-six million dollar facility, check yes or no, bond B, the second B, is going to be for the neighborhood pools, if you're interested in just that portion, check B, or C would be, you know, all the others, so I'm wondering, I'm, I'm wondering on that bond, on the ballot, could we have three bond proposals instead of bundling, bundling it all, because some citizens are interested in some of the package, but not in all of it, so maybe we can do a la carte, a buffet when they go to the polls, is that possible, or does it have to be on one great big question?
Of course, we're going to have to, we haven't asked the bond counsel that specific question, we certainly need to get more information, I think that the, part of the challenges would be however, that what we need to do is, is to actually, the reason they're spaced out is that we need to spend some money to actually design them as part of the process.
With, with that being said, I'm just asking the one-on-one question so my citizens can understand it and I can understand it, if there are three bonds, no matter when they are funded or whatever the financial terms are, can there be three separate listings on, because we're going to pay a hundred thousand dollars to do this election, I can guess we can put whatever questions we want on there, I would guess.
I would guess, but they would be three separate questions?
Yes, sir.
Each one would have to pass separately?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm asking, that is possible, correct? Is that going to cost us any more of the, than one hundred thousand dollars that we're already going to pay?
That I don't know.
So, probably just an extra question, correct? No more, no more cost?
I don't know.
You don't know, who would know?
We'd have to ask the Department of Elections.
So, you think they would charge us more money just for putting an extra question on there?
I don't know, ma'am, I haven't asked them.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's it, ma'am.
That's it, thank you, sir.
Ms. Chris?
I'm sorry, I got a lie from somebody.
Yes, sir.
Ms. McDonald?
Councilmember Applewhite, I did want to clarify one of the questions that you asked as related to the hiring of the police officers, we would not be able to issue bond debt for the hiring, i.e. of the officers and the operating.
But could we, could we build a three or five or seven million dollar facility, police substation?
I just wanted to clarify that it would only be for the capital outlay.
Okay, so one time sort of cost to build it versus a recurring cost for the police officers, so that is possible to, the one time, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Chris?
Mr. Gibson, I've been stopped in the food line, the parking lot, everywhere. I have a situation that's very different from council member Hare, as Ms. Applewhite has stated, today is the first day in all this time that I have ever received an email endorsing this, and the gentleman that sent me the email is present in here tonight, that's the first time, I'm dealing with a bunch of angry citizens who still haven't gotten over taxation via annexation, all right? What I need, Mr. Mayor, is a month for you and whomever to come, I got three meetings this Saturday, I need somebody, the last two of these presentations have been absolutely excellent, but what I have, and I had people talking to me Sunday as I came out of church, I have a bunch of citizens that don't understand this at all, the only thing they understand, taxation, you're going to increase my taxes, I like this, but I need somebody to come out and sell it to them, and I don't want to push this down the throats of them right now, this thing is too important to fail, but I don't share your optimism that if we go at it immediately tonight that it's going to pass, I don't share that at all, because I don't have people in my district, Val doesn't, and others that are in favor of this as it is, but I think the problem is, we haven't educated them, and I would, Mr. Mayor, hope that we can delay at least a month and give us an opportunity to better educate our citizens, thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir, can we get back to the circles on the aquatic center?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson, you had stated that it was a six-mile radius on those circles, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that would make it a twelve-mile diameter?
No, sir, what, the, the radius is from point to point, it's six miles, it's three miles across.
The, the circle's a three-mile circle, so it's a one, so it's a one and a half mile radius on each circle?
Exactly.
Okay, sorry, that was the clarification I need, because I heard a six mile, I heard a six mile, I'm trying to figure out how you could only be a mile and a half.
I was thinking about?
Okay, that's, that's fine, that was just a quick questionnaire, and then, can we flip to the, the circle that's got the, the ones that got the circles with the parks and the neighborhood, neighborhood parks, and I'm, I'm hearing much of the same thing that Mr. Crisp and Ms. Applewhite are hearing as well, on, on my end, on my end of the neighborhood, and that, and that's fine, but I have a question for you about a couple things, because, you know, Mayor Protem and Arp and I rode with you on Friday, and I'm not going to be as delicate as you were about, you know, changes in people's perceptions and that type of thing, but with these smaller neighborhood parks, that's a lot more maintenance that's going to be required than we currently have, I would think, and the thing that I'm going to be not delicate about is not what Parks and Rec staff's doing, but what our citizens are doing with our parks, you know, I believe that when, when your staff is having to clean up the park, that cleanup should be taking bags of trash out of the trash cans and replacing them with empty bags.
Yes.
But what I saw was trash strewn all over the park, I mean, it just cups, papers, wrappers, stuff thrown all over the park, which isn't an additional maintenance expense, I'm sure for you, because of time of people having to go out and clean it up, and, and to be fair to you and your staff, you can't be out there every fifteen minutes, you know, cleaning up trash, but it's one of those things that gives an appearance of a lack of care, again, like I said, that's not you that has the lack of care, it's, it's the people using the park, and, and when we start to have more of those opportunities for that around, particularly with the smaller neighborhood parks, has, has that been considered of how, how that maintenance is going to work, that's, that's transporting a lot more lawnmowers and stuff around to mow, or are you planning to farm out some of that, and how, how is that going to work?
Well, one of the things that, that we're doing and we've been doing for over the past three years is we're changing the responsibility of our onsite staff at our recreation facilities, in the past, if, if you saw a person cleaning up the rec center, that person didn't have any responsibility to the outside of the facility. Over the past two and a half, maybe three years, we have requested that we change that person's responsibility from a custodian to a maintenance worker, which would give that person more responsibility to go outside of that facility and clean it up, well?
So, they would still clean inside, but also clean outside?
Exactly, right.
Okay, make sure we're not abandoning one for the other.
No, sir, and what, what you're having is, when the, the center staff or the person who works at a recreational center can do more of that than what that does now, is that extends our park staff to have more man-hours to go to these unmanned parks, these neighborhood parks and do more work there. Now, I want to be real clear, at any time that, that you go to one of our neighborhood parks, you could easily see trash at any time.
I know, I know.
And that's based on a uses issue, I live out in the western part of the community, I live off of Fisher Road, and whenever I go to parks, and one of the things that I, and I don't know how long I have my anonymity now, but I go out to the park and people don't know who I am, and you get an honest opinion of how people use your facility, and one of the things that I hear the most is, we don't have enough, if you go down Fisher Road over at E. Melvin Honeycutt, it is, it is, we got kids practicing side, on the side of the road in that part of our community, when we went on our ride the other day, it was seven-thirty in the morning, when staff gets there, the changes that we're going to make, those bags should be out of those trash cans and new ones going in there, now before we left, there were probably twenty-five people coming into the park, well, as soon as they go back in the building and they come back out two hours later, there'll be more trash there, just because our urbanization is growing so fast, but we're making plans, we're doing things to change that.
My concern's not the trash in the cans, it's the trash outside the cans, which you have no control over, that, on that side there.
Litter, litter in the community.
And I want to go to another, I want to go to another last question, which has to do with, with the operational costs, because I think that's the issue that you were talking about sustaining, that'd be sustaining because the operational costs would be offset, and to make sure that it's clear that people understand that, that if we're going to offset those operational costs, that there will be a fee to use the facility, whether you're a city taxpayer or not, some of those facilities are going to require user fees on top of the fact that we're, we're floating the bond to pay for them, is that? Is that correct or not correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, and there would be, and people from outside the community could use the facilities and they, they would pay a fee, but it would be a higher fee than city residents?
It would be a non-residence fee.
Okay, have you factored in a cost for some identification factor for citizens of Fayetteville so that they could be easily identified as citizens? Uh, so that, uh, you know, the appropriate fees would be collected?
We already have that process. Um, when our kids sign up for football, basketball, baseball, we have an identification where you sit in front of a camera and you take a picture of that child or, or a person that's in a program, their address, um, where they live, they have to bring in three identifications. Only thing that we would do is we would extend that and sort of use what the library does. We would give them a card, an ID card with their name on the back with, uh, information that they could just swipe.
Okay, would it be a photo ID or would it just be?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And we gotta be a little delicate, delicate with that, but yes, we would be able to identify them.
Mr. Massey?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gibson, I have shared a similar experience that Mr. Hare, probably because we're on the best side of Fayetteville. But, uh, notwithstanding all that, uh, if you look at the, the, uh, All-American Highway, which I'll say on this map, it looks like it's pretty much right down the middle of the, the city of Fayetteville.
Yes, sir.
On the right side of that map, you have five major projects. That'll be to the east.
Yes, sir.
On the west side of that map, you have four major projects. They have been, uh, they have been identified.
Yes, sir.
Now, I would hope that all of our citizens, without regard to what side of the city that, that they live on, understand that the future is still gonna be the future for everybody here. And that we take the time, look at, study and contemplate and make a wise vote in terms of the future of this city, whichever way it happens to go. But notwithstanding all that, I wanna thank the committees for having shown a degree of balance. Uh, this, if this doesn't fly, it's because the bird doesn't have any wings. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bates?
Top that one, buddy.
Well, I'm like the rest of them. The only ones that I've heard of that were in favor were from the, um, Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Rec Board or the Senior Advisory Board were the only ones that I've heard of that were in favor. Um, I've heard that, you know, the crime, the crime, the crime is all in the neighborhoods, it's everywhere. And until we do something to get, and I know, since the crime, if you build it, they will come, and you are correct. Because I won't say the name of the store, Ms. McDonald's, but there's one on Sky Bow that shut downs very early than what they used to because of the crime. Where'd they move? Across the street. What did they just do? They just shut down, put a, put pretty much a curfew on themselves over there. Um, so then they're gonna go find somewhere else to go. And that is my concern, um, is the crime. Um, and then the Aquatic Senior Center, you know, I've mentioned it before. I am not comfortable with, you know, First Plant and Bragg Boulevard. Um, for one, Ingrass and Egress, you know, the, the chain, the roads would have to be changed. Um, are they gonna let us clear cut sixteen acres that close to the watershed? To put it in, and then the parking lot, and you know, you have all your oil and stuff runoff. Um, so they're just, I, I'm with Mr. Crisp. I'd just like to see it. Um, give us thirty more days, the special meetings, that this is the only thing on the agenda and let's bump some heads and knuckles and all that good stuff and, and tweak it, tweak it a little bit more. So, but that's, that's my concern is the crime and locations of a couple of them.
Mr. Hurst? I'm sorry, Mr. Bates, was that everything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the, um, the Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks Advisory Committee for their many years of hard work and Mr. Gibson for, for your leadership. Um, I was looking over this, uh, map. I've had a mix of citizens, some support, some do not. And I think the education process is critical as we move forward with this. I think it's critical though we, uh, we, we give the citizens the opportunity, as mentioned earlier in the public forum, the opportunity to vote in February. In District Five, um, the only improvements that I've seen was two years ago to Woodrow Street, Wilson Street Park.
Yes, sir.
Which, um, helped, as I've seen, um, eliminate some of the, um, traffic and heavy, uh, large participation at the ma, uh, at the, uh, Park at Honeycutt. So I think that's been a tremendous success. Uh, the only new thing that we're getting in District Five is the tennis center. But a lot of the citizens that are in my district, um, around Village Drive and that area, Clearway, um, missed the Dark Branch Tennis Complex, which was rather large because of its closing. So they're very happy to see that in District Five. So I support it because of the fact that it's well-balanced. It meets the needs of our, uh, young children and our seniors and the geographic, um, layout of this and especially for the value that it brings to quality of life. So I just commend you on, on bringing this forward, uh, to the city of Fayetteville. And I hope we can move forward to give it to the city's citizens to vote.
So?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hare?
Mr. Gibson, one thing that I did bring up that I, uh, at, when we did the work session was a concern that I had, um, which is a legitimate concern that I heard from Ms. Applewhite tonight was concerning crime. And especially since we're talking about our parks, crime within our parks. And I think, uh, I don't exactly how I worded it, but the last time I spoke to you, I talked to you about, um, well, you know, we've been having some crime in some of our, uh, parks and it's been, you know, rather severe. With, with the parks now and with all that's proposed in the proposal, what's gonna be in place to, to sort of curtail, you know, crime? You know, we can't, I mean, are our parks, are there gonna be gates to stop people? When the parks are closed, there are some parks that you can still drive into.
Yes.
And people are gone. Uh, so you know, anything can, can happen. So when we look at something from that perspective, is that something that's too far out of the picture for us to consider trying to be more protective of? Is, is this a worthwhile question?
Oh, I think so. Anytime that you're, you're, you're designing something, safety is always a major thing. Uh, we just finished doing something out, um, uh, doing some renovations here in the city. And, uh, we're talking about, uh, the, uh, sports complex with the school on, on Century Circle. And that's one of the major things that we're looking into now is, how do we stop people from using the facilities when they're not in use? Um, so fencing, cameras, that kind of thing gets us because, uh, uh, one of the things we, we learned from our police department, when you have a well-lit community or a well-lit park, uh, crime tends to walk, stay away from that. So anytime that we're gonna design something, safety, uh, and how we manage it and how it manages itself when there are nobody, where people are not there, uh, is, is a definite concern. So yes, we are looking into that.
And where is that? List, would that be something that would be noted here?
Well, it would be, it would be in our planning design.
Okay. Uh, and. It wouldn't be in this document that we got tonight?
If you, if you look in, and it'd be the, I think it's the, uh, third, uh, page where it, it says planning and design at the bottom.
Okay, okay, okay. And you say that will consist of?
Uh, on, on, on the facility itself and how we keep it safe and how we manage it and how it manages itself when, uh, people are not there. So, yeah.
Will we have something, I can't remember where it was, I had heard we'd had some issue that happened in the city, but recordings that could be shared with our police department if something is caught, you know?
Well, we, we do that now. We have cameras at our rec centers, um, that do a, sort of like a seventy-two hour loop. Uh, and we've used it successfully to, uh, to, uh, to manage some, um, pretty touchy situations already.
Interior and exterior.
And interior and exterior. We do that now.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, um, we're, we're talking, we're talking about the ability to, um, make some, uh, some major implications in our parks and recs. And, and, and part of this is gonna be a fee-based service for our citizens, our customer. And, uh, a question I have is, currently with any parks or pools that we have, are we charging fees? Are we generating revenue with existing facilities that we have?
Yes, sir. We charge at the, the one pool that we do have at Seabrook, we charged, uh, uh, a fee for them to get into at a dollar and two dollars.
And from an operating cost standpoint, how, how much does that generate? Ten percent?
Well, I, I, I don't know the number right offhand, um, but it's not, it's, it's not revenue neutral or generates a profit. And, and one of the reasons, um, that I would say we cannot do it is because we can't rent that pool anybody. Because it's in operation continuously. We have, uh, uh, we've had some heated discussions, uh, uh, with a few council members here about why we can't rent the pool at Seabrook for parties or, um, for swim clubs. It's because we can't close it because that's the only one that we have. So, uh, generating revenue with one pool is, is a little difficult when you're trying to have it for public use.
So when we go to our neighborhood aquatic centers, will, will we have the same problem with those or, I mean?
No, sir. And, and, and I'm glad that you gave, given me this opportunity.
I'm trying to serve you up here.
I appreciate it. Um, one of, one of the things that would happen, uh, is that you, you, just like anything, you have more hours of use when you have more facilities. So it's just like our baseball fields, our picnic shelters. The more you have, the more that you, you have the ability to rent them because you can shift people around to use facilities. So one of the things that we don't even have now in our Parks and Recreation repertoire of sports is swim teams. That's a whole genre that we're not even in. Uh, and in a community this large, if we could have the ability, like we do baseball fields and soccer fields, to facilitate the program, then we could offer that, just like the school system struggles now. But if we could get into the swim business, we could generate revenue.
Is, is the school system gonna get in with us since they want these swim?
Oh, yes, sir. We've had those conversations. Oh, yeah. We've had, we've had conversations. They, they.
We've, we've had conversations, but do we have a contract?
I, I think that, uh, I think that, uh, um.
I, I, I'll, I'll commit to swim teams, but don't make me sign.
Well, I think that if, uh, you had it and, and you could have a better conversation, I think, uh, by Mr. Mr. West's appearance here this day, talking, uh, about the facilities gives us an indication that that's something that they're, they're, they would be amenable to.
And, and no offense, amenable and committed are, are two words. I've been amenable to a lot of ladies in my young life, but I committed to one. Why you hoping that can?
That's right. Well, we would, we would wait till the ink is dry.
Be careful about words. Let me go, uh, let me say this.
Yeah.
Um, oh, that's cute. When we look at, when we look at the Garner Report, and, and I'm glad to see the, uh, the folks from the chamber here, one of the things we talk about is the image of the city, um, and how we can improve the image of the city. And, uh, what, if you had to pick five projects, and you could only pick five, which five would have the biggest impact on the image of the city?
I think the, the first, the big five that we put up, if, 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 if that was a question, um, the only, the only reason that I would hesitate is because we have the, the, the ability for families to go out to our neighborhood parks, um, and just be a family. Uh, is something that I would hesitate on. But if you're looking for economic impact, then the five major projects gives, gives us that economic impact and changes Fayetteville to becoming a destination, to reason for people to come here to do something, um, uh, from a leisure services standpoint. It gets us into the game.
Okay, it, and, and I'm gonna follow up. If, if you didn't get those five, are, are current parks having an economic impact? And if not, what can we do with our current parks to change that image?
Well, it, it's, it's competition. I mean, we're, we're in a, we're in a, uh, I'll give you a prime example. We're talking now with the Conventions Bureau, um, about, uh, retooling our sports authority so that we can compete, um, uh, with the Greensbournes and the Charlottes and the Rowleys, uh, to bring in big sports tournaments. Uh, the issue is, is always venues. Uh, because when you go up there, right now, um, I think last year, uh, we, we're hosting, um, four hundred soccer teams um, in this community. We've done it for the past three years. But every year, Mr. Arp, the Greensbournes and the Rowleys and the Charlottes come after those four hundred teams. Right now, they stay with us because we treat them well. We give them convenience. Uh, it's easy to navigate Cumberland County a lot easier. So, but unless we decide to, to change the way we do business and compete with better venues, they're not gonna stay much longer because those, uh, those communities will do a better job of convincing them to leave.
I, I just, I'll, I'll, I'll close with this. Um, in principle, I'm in favor of, of what we're trying to do here. I, I like the idea of the Parks referendum, you know, I like the idea of allowing the citizens to vote, uh, on, on this situation. But, but I am, I am concerned about the timing. I am concerned because unfortunately, a lot of the feedback I'm receiving is not to the affirmative. It's, it's to the negative. And so, you know, you've heard several of the council members talk tonight about, you know, maybe tabling this, taking thirty days, looking at it a little bit more detail. Um, I, I'm concerned that we've gone from sixty-five million as a city-county project and now we're going to fifty-five million and the city's bearing that burden. And, uh, you know, and I know some of our, our, our fellow citizens that are serving and other governmental boards are in favor of doing this, but my concern is they're not the ones funding it. They're not the ones that, you know, five, ten years from now, will be trying to find the operational cost, uh, funds to fund it. And, uh, and, and frankly, you know, I think you do a great job, but as I ride around and I look at our current parks, we need to be funding our current parks more today than we are. Uh, and so, you know, I, I think that's something we as a body have to accept responsibility for. Because in discussions with you and, and, and Mr. Kristoff on Friday, you said your budget's been cut. Um, I think it's important that we maintain our parks, but at the same time.
This is the question part, sir.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, you know, to, to you in closing that we just, I wanna make sure that the citizens, when, when they ask Michael, we can answer them. Can we do this? Can we maintain these? Can we keep them operating ten years from now? Um, so when they go down and you, like Mazarick Park, when I went down tonight and talked to some residents, that it doesn't look the way it does today.
You expect of that? I, I think that was a question.
It was. Oh, uh, if, if, in, in, in our capital projects, um, I think one of the things that, um, the, especially the major five projects that we already have, um, with our senior center inside the multipurpose aquatic center, um, uh, with the track and field facility and aquatics facility, we already have budgets for that. One of the things that we would do for our senior center, um, the one that we have on Blue Street now, we would close that and move that, that personnel, that city personnel into this new facility. We already have athletic coordinators that we have in our, in our one-twenty-one Lehman Street building. We would move into these facilities. Our tennis center that we, we run down at Mazarick, we already pay somebody to, to run that for us and manage it. We would just be moving staff because we would have better facilities. As far as, uh, what do we do ten years from now? I think that as this community grows and these facilities generate revenue, they become self-sufficient. Now, is, is, is ninety-five percent self-efficient? Then that's the question that you would have to ask yourself. But as far as the, the revenue generation on these facilities, um, I've been around, uh, the state and I've seen some of the activities that go on. There are tremendous sports venues that make tremendous amounts of money. Uh, how we manage these facilities, how we take care of them. Um, one of the things, Mr. Arp, that, that we have in this community now, based on our current Parks and Recreation inventory, is that we have a user problem. We have more people using our facilities every day. Uh, and I always use the, the inference, we have three semi-pro football teams and two of them are women teams that go out and use our facilities every day. And we can't spread them out because we don't have enough facilities based on our master plan numbers, where, how deficient we were in two thousand and six for the population we had then. Now it's two thousand and twelve and our population has grown. So if you keep the same assets for the next five to ten years, then you're gonna have a wear issue and a uses issue that you're never gonna be able to accommodate because of the population, the urbanization of this community. because of the population, the urbanization of this community.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Applewhite.
Promise I'll be very quick. I think we're just about ready for a vote here. Two questions. Mr. Gibson, can you put back the slide that had the radius, the distance? That circle thing right there? Yeah, that's fine. So the family aquatic centers that are in the neighborhoods? The ones that are in the neighborhoods?
Yes, ma'am.
They're outdoor pools?
Yes, ma'am.
And that outdoor season is from what to what?
The May 30th or what's... Memorial Day to now. And traditionally, we have not extended that time to the end of the summer, to the 1st of September, but it's roughly 28 weeks.
Okay. Now, I'm sorry, could you go to the next slide? It has the other circles with the projects on there. Okay. So if you look, you use that line right down the middle, the All-American, to the left, we have neighborhood parks with aquatic centers that are all outdoors that'll be used for 28 weeks out of the year. And I'm going to assume this tennis center is an indoor all year round?
No, ma'am. The tennis center would be outdoors.
That's outdoor as well. Okay, so you've got all outdoor stuff. I guess people play tennis all year round, though, in this climate. Now, when you go on the other side of All-American now, I'm going to play a little district politics for you. I'm 28314. I'm all the way to the left. Okay? Now, if we go all the way over and we look at the multipurpose aquatic and senior center, is that an indoor facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that operational 24 all year round?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That sports complex, is that an indoor facility?
No, ma'am. It'd be outdoor.
That's all outdoor?
Yes.
So there's one pool, and a skateboard park is outdoors. Okay, so there's still one pool that will be accessible to our community 365, the senior citizen. And that is, if we were to put that... So if you look at my kids right here, 28314, how far is it to get to that indoor pool? How many miles is that?
I would say roughly from, and if you use Fisher Road, where I live at, out that way, I would say probably about seven to eight miles.
Seven to eight miles. And I'm going to say that not just my district, but areas in Councilmember Chris and some of Fowler's, there's not even a bus that could get a kid out there. There's no transportation service. So when we talk about providing facilities for our youth year round, Western Fayetteville is still limited to that 28 weeks you talked about because it's not walkable, it's not bus accessible. So, yeah, well, parents, we're not even going to go there. But my last question is, we're in this process for our business community who wish to be a part of this. Will there be a point where, when contracts, RFPs are made, that we will, I hate to use the term "set aside", that may not be the right...
Yes, it is.
Set aside, the right term?
Hope you say it.
Set aside for minority, local businesses? Where does that happen? Assuming this was passed tonight, how can we tie a percentage of work that will go to minorities or local business people here? Can we tie that to this package somehow?
I don't think that's legal, but let me explain why, what I'm contemplating and talking with Kristoff about. And I'll be quick, and I'll try to be as clean as I can on this. One of the ways that capital projects are done, traditionally done, is that you hire an architect. They give you what a facility looks like. Then you take that and you put it out on the street to see if somebody can build this picture. One of the things that I would like to do, and I've advocated it since we started this a year ago, is develop design-build teams. We would go out and ask groups of people to come in, professionals. That would be architects, engineers, and construction people to be on teams. So that we could get it, so that when they came in, we would know when we walked out of the room what that finished product would look like and the fact that we could actually build it for the money that we already have. It saves a lot of time, it's tremendously efficient, and it's something that the Parks and Recreation Business is doing across the country now. Well, what that does is, that gives our local business people the opportunity to team up together and come in with a best possible plan in building the strengths from small businesses, from small construction companies, to get together to say, listen, let's go after this project.
So as we move forward in this, sometimes these projects kind of get away from us. And I would say that most of us get phone calls from business owners wanting to do business. We get a lot of those phone calls. Before this project gets away from us, will this come back to council so we can have input on how our local businesses are included or not? Or is this just out the gate?
We'll, of course, have to follow the appropriate steps for acquiring process. You will be involved in this process, but as, you know...
How do we do what he just said, this design teams? How do we lock that in?
Well, the design teams will bring proposals. Those proposals will be graded, and a recommendation will come back to the council for adoption.
Exactly.
That's good. That's what I wanted to hear then.
But of course, we don't get there. You know, we don't have the money to spend if we don't actually get something on the ballot and passed.
We get that, Mr. Bauer. We understand. Thank you.
One more question, mister.
Hold on one second, sir. I'm going down the list here. That's pretty lengthy. Ms. Davie.
All right. Thank you again for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Commission for the Members to be here as they represent citizens all across the city of Fayetteville and the county. As Councilmember Hurst was talking about, you know, the different parts of districts, you know, what's represented in different areas. And I definitely have to take this opportunity to speak to East of the River, who's been waiting a long, long time for something. And as you told us in our work session, that the sports complex is looked at that location, not just because we have the property, but just the proximity to other amenities. But my question to you is, as we talk about crime, which is a big bubble for all of us, and we talk about the crime bracket of ages, which a lot of that has to do with the youth at risk. And we talk about what the Parks and Recs has done and what they will continue to do with the growth if this bond is passed. Can you speak to, you know, as we talk about what our youth are doing right now? They don't have anything to do, or they don't have access to things. Can you really speak to what the bond referendum can do for our youth at risk and also as for crime?
I think one of the things that, from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, that, and where I agree with Councilmember Arp is the more constructive programs that you have for youth, be it sports, be it music, be it cultural arts, the better off you grow a community. You change the concept of what young people do and what their outlook is. One of the things that I do, Ms. Davies, and when I have an opportunity to talk to young people, and I always do a litmus test, when you're talking to elementary kids, they have a tremendous dream ratio. They believe that they can do whatever their little minds tell them they can do. Well, what happens is, as they get older, and that starts around that middle school age category, when they start to understand the realization of what the world really is. Well, if they don't have a basis for construction of discipline, and I believe that's what Parks and Recreation gives young people, the ability to be strong-minded, the ability to understand how discipline works through a community. I'd like to challenge Ms. Applewhite a little bit when she says that the kids can't get there. Well, one of the reasons why the mall is doing what they're doing is because there are too many kids in there. So when you talk about these facilities and having constructive things for kids to do, having a skate park where guys can go out or girls can go out and manage their talents in an environment that they'd like to be in, well, if they're there skating all day, chances are, they're not going to be someplace where the citizens or business owners are calling them and kids are gliding across their property. It changes the community. It gives kids better options. And I think this bond package gives this community better options.
Two more quick questions. Am I still on? Okay. Two more quick questions. As we talked a little bit about the substation and Attorney McDonald explained to us that that can only be used for capital if we were going to add that. So then, I guess the issue that the citizens have for more safety is they actually want more police officers, but we cannot use the bond to fund or hire police officers. Is that one I'm, just to clarify that? We can't use the money from the bond to hire. So even if we do use the bond for the capital to build it, we wouldn't have the personnel to fund it, to fill it. Okay. And then my last question, just to kind of speak to the community meetings and continue to educate the community members about the bond. If you all can kind of explain, you know, if this does go through, what the process is? Because I know that there's going to be more meetings, more opportunities for the neighbors to talk. But as I think Mr. Bauer explained, that we have to... If you can just kind of explain that process.
Thank you. And I just want to say, this is not a chicken or egg problem. This is truly, we can't start the conversation in the community until council takes this step. We need to have your authorization to go out there and have this conversation with the community about what's being proposed. And that's what we're waiting for. I've been involved with three bond issues in the community. Only one was successful. One of them was a public-private partnership for a major stadium, and that was not successful because people saw that as a special interest, and they didn't support it. Another one was for a pool. And part of the community had a pool. And then we wanted to add the next pool. And of course, the part of the community that had the pool didn't vote for it. You know, we had divided the community. We gave part to one community, and then when the time gave, gave the part to the next community, it wasn't there. Now, the one that passed, we had a whole year to have a conversation with the community. We went to every PTA meeting. We went to every Rotary Club. We went to every community watch we could and answered all their questions. And that one passed. And I think that's the challenge we have here, is that we had actually had hoped, when we laid out our timeline, that we would have this before you and the Commission in February of this year, and that we would be moving forward now with documents that had a full description of the projects that we could share with the community and help them answer their questions so they can make a knowledgeable decision. We don't have those documents created yet. And we're getting, I know February seems like a long ways away. It is not. Because there are only so many nights in a week and so many months in the year for us to get out there and have those conversations. So what we would do, if council approved this, is we would tie up those communication documents that have been sort of sitting out there waiting for us to finalize. We would start to make those meetings and those appointments with the community meetings. We actually have a part-time person who's working on setting up that calendar for us. And as soon as we have your sanction, we will go out there and start having that conversation with the community about what's being proposed, why it's being proposed, what it costs, how we would operate it. All those excellent questions that you have asked, we would expect them to ask as well. And we'd be able to give them the answers to that question so they can make an informed decision in February. And that's, we would go out, and again, all we can do is inform. And then we would, there may be others in the community who are willing to step up and take a more active role as far as support. That would be up to the private sector to make that decision.
Okay, ma'am. Mr. Chris?
One final comment. And to clarify, one of the reasons I'm asking for more time to sell this is because the question has been asked to me, why would you spend $582,000 to build a skateboard park, which is a bridge and a half too far from the kids in my district? It's my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gibson, but I believe the majority of skateboarders are 16 and under. So how will they get from way out there all the way to the skateboard park? One of the things I'd like to talk about, if we do have additional time, is why can't we take that $582,000, break it down, and put a small skateboard-type facility where you put in each of these outdoor pools? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bauer, let me ask you just a couple kind of administrative things. I want to make sure, something we said earlier when we approved the budget and the command council for that, and certainly our commitment to the police department. Would you go back and share with us the commitment that we made tonight to funding police, additional police staffing, and what that would represent over an equal period of time here?
Yes. Over the five-year period, that total cost for adding that 28 personnel plus all their equipment is $2.8 million. If you stretch that to the life of the bonds that are proposed here, that total investment would be $54 million.
So $54 million decision was made by this council tonight as it relates to public safety. Is that a fair statement? I want to maybe touch a little bit, and I think someone, Katie probably did, but people who have done successful bond packages, and we all acknowledge that it's an uphill battle to ever win one of these, I mean, to ever get one passed. But it's up to the citizens to make that decision. Is that one of the reasons that it has as many hooks in it, and they're spread over the community, both geographically and in use? You know, skaters, swimmers, baseball players, multi-use facilities, seniors? Is that part of the strategy?
Well, and if you look at the master plan, that's exactly what they said. They said that we needed a myriad of facilities to keep up with our diverse community and our different interests in this community. So yes, sir, it was.
And in order to pass one, it has to have, as Kristoff said, it has to have something for everybody.
Well, and I agree, Mayor. And fragmenting the community is not something that Parks and Recreation was interested in. We get phone calls from baseball players, tennis players, runners, swimmers. And we wanted to make sure that we brought something to the community that had an interest for the total community, just not part of the community.
And when we started this journey six years ago with those community meetings and people having input, prioritized lists, I remember the master plan, quote-unquote, kind of coming back. back, and the total price of that was 80-something million dollars?
82 million.
82 million dollars. And now, after we've refined it, the county's made their decision, we've reduced it down to city projects, what exactly is it that we would have a bond package for? What would we be borrowing? I want to make sure we don't lose sight of that number, because I think that number's a little different than what people are pointing at.
What we'd be borrowing, the actual debt incurred, I believe, is $46 million.
$46 million. So we started at $82 million, six years ago, community-based, and we would be borrowing $46 million worth of bonds to be successful?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I think that's everybody's, uh, lights on the questions, and we'll go back to Ms. Davey, I think if my sheets are correct, for a motion. Ms. Davey.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, direct staff to place a, um, general obligation bond referendum to finance various parks and recreation improvements for the city on the ballot in February 2013.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, and I'm sure there'll be some discussion on this, so we'll start a new set of lights, and, uh, Mr. Arp.
Well, I just want to clarify, the $86 million that was previously planned, that, that was the total price. That wasn't after you factored in the revenue generated and all that stuff that would bring it down to, to like the 54 million?
I talked about, I'm sorry, the 80, 82 million?
The price tag of this bond referendum is $54 million, but if you factor out the revenue it can generate as it matures, it goes down to 46, I think you said?
Uh, the 46 is how much we use debt for. Uh, the rest of it is paid for, some with cash, some with existing resources.
Okay, but with the $86 million original number, that, that was the top figure?
That was for a completely different set of projects.
It had more projects than they end up including.
Completely different set of projects.
Yeah, it was a completely different set.
I, I think what you're talking about is you're talking about the master plan book. If we did everything in that book in 2006, that price tag then was 82 million.
And that would have been, the total amount that would have been borrowed, would have been 82 million?
Don't know. We never got to that point in the process.
No, we, we never.
I just want to make sure, because, an apples-to-apples comparison. Um, I, I'm certainly in favor of this, um, going to the citizens for a vote, but I'm not in favor of going tonight. Uh, I still have a lot of questions I, I would like to have answered. In principle, I'm, I support it, uh, but I still have some, uh, things that I'd like to get answered, and I'd like to, uh, work on this some for about 30 days.
Mr. Hare.
Yes, sir. Thank you, uh, Mayor, and thanks to all the council members for the questions. I think we've been, we've been working pretty good with this tonight and being very respectful to each other. Uh, in, in, uh, 28306 zip code, with what we are requesting on the, on the bond, because there was a legitimate question that came up that we keep talking, you know, that came up about the, a, a substation or something along that line, can something like that be put in that place, in that building, that's in that 28306 zip code?
Um, the, the only thing that we have listed for 28306 would be a neighborhood park and a neighborhood pool.
Okay. Well, it was something over in that area, was it the, the building?
No, sir. The, the only thing, no, sir.
Nothing in that, in that, uh, in the western area where it was, uh, something enclosed?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay. Then, then I, um, I misunderstood. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fowler.
Uh, this actually is just a, a comment or a question for the council, is do you think this bond would have a better chance of, of approval if you had strong consensus on the council sending it forward versus possibly very weak consensus or, or no consensus at all, and that you might have a much better chance of having strong consensus 30 days from now than you will from tonight?
Mr. Bates.
Um, I, I strongly support, um, putting this on referendum and allowing the citizens to vote. Um, I appreciate all your hard work. I mean, you're very knowledgeable on there, you've done great, and our board members, um, worked very hard on it, but, um, from everything I've gathered from the citizens, my, the input I've receiving from them, this is not going to pass at $50 million, $45 million. It's not going to pass. And that's why I favor 30 days to take a look and see if there's something we can make, you know, to do to make sure that it does pass, but everything I hear that they're telling me, no, but, nobody's voting for it. I mean, they're, they're not going to vote for it. I mean, so that's just my...
Okay. Thank you, sir. You know, I, I think, and I, I do commend, someone else said it, I think it's worth repeating, I, I do think that this is a complicated issue, and it's one that council members have different opinions on, and we've been respectful, and I certainly, uh, appreciate that. Um, I don't think it's one that's being taken in isolation, that's why I asked a question about the investment in the police department. You know, we improve our community in a lot of different ways, and we do it at every council meeting that we have, and we've done that tonight with the approval of the budget. So this is not in isolation, and it doesn't mean the other things aren't important, and it doesn't think, it doesn't mean that we're not moving forward in those areas. This weekend, 208,000 people in this city did not even have a swimming pool. So I would ask you, where, where were those children at this weekend? Wasn't a tennis court for them to play on? Wasn't a swimming pool for them to go to? Wasn't a skateboard park for most of them to get to? What were they doing? And I would ask you this before we vote. Do you really think that 30 days is going to make a difference?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll just ask you to think about it before you answer that, because I just made a list of all that we've talked about tonight, as we throw everything on the, I'm speaking right now, sir.
I hear you.
As we throw everything on the wall, questioning indoor/outdoor, questioning whether I've got enough in my district, or East Fayetteville versus West Fayetteville, whether we want to include a police substation in it, whether we want to have set aside for the contractors that build it and design it, whether we want to reduce the scope because it's not going to sell. Do you really think that it's going to be any easier for us a month from now? Because all those are very legitimate points, and, and we could all argue those, and they're good ones, and I'm not being critical of any of those. I'm just saying, it is a very, very complicated scenario. And all we're really asking tonight is to give us time to be successful and let the citizens of this community vote. We're not arguing for it, pro or con, we're just asking, can we allow the citizens to vote? And give us the time to plan. I mean, make sure I didn't miss anybody. I think some people hit after I did. Mr. Bates, did you have your question answered, sir?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Applewhite, did you, ma'am?
I, I would.
Okay.
Um, I, I will say that, again, Mike, you put a lot of work into this, and you and I both have a passion for youth, children, so, a fact. But, not to be critical, but I find it a little disingenuous that all of a sudden we're so concerned about the children in our community that we need $46 million bond package to all of a sudden correct all of the ills that we have with our youth. We have tried numerous things on this council, from a youth, from establishing a youth council that went nowhere, to other entities, and it hasn't gone anywhere. But now that it's, you know, we're here trying to pass a, a, a bond, now we're talking children. When we had that, that video go viral that talked about the gangs in our community that threatened the Dogwood Festival, that was nothing new. No, no one was surprised about that. That's been existing in our neighborhoods for years, and we've never done anything about it. But now that it's time to pass a bond, now it's, let's save the children. The second thing that I would say is that, yes, I also agree that the citizens should have the opportunity to vote, but if we're going to put $100,000 on a referendum, when by all accounts, our citizens are saying, you are wasting your time and your money, you better bring us something that is manageable. I think that that's what we're hearing here. If there's a possibility, we want to throw good money out of the window, put this package on the, on the, on the referendum. If we scale it back, tweak it, address some of these concerns, even our, I don't think it's frivolous to say that, to ask questions about our businesses. I've gotten calls from small businesses here. I think that's a legitimate thing that they want to know about. In fact, one business owner said, if you don't address it, we will go on our own campaign to defeat this referendum. So these things are real. So perhaps, Mayor, it's not 30 days, maybe it needs to be 60 or 90. But we can't be in a rush to spend $46 million.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hare.
What I wanted to, uh, understand was, if this item was to, whichever way this item goes tonight, let's just say that it was to pass, if it was to pass, from this point here to, uh, February, uh, Mr., um, city manager, would we have the opportunity to have dialogue like we're having tonight, tweaking that may need to be done, uh, changes that could possibly take place? We're most definitely going to have to have public hearings, I'll assume. Uh, another one of my concerns that I ask you, uh, over in the Lafayette Room, that would we, and you said it had to come before us first, you know, it had to be up or down first, but if it was up, would we go into different sectors of the community and make this, this presentation? Couldn't all of the concerns, which are very, very legitimate concerns tonight, couldn't all of those concerns be addressed afterwards, and then we could kind of look at those things between now and the next few months? Is that, I mean, could, could not that work?
As I understand your, your question, council member, we really need to have a stable package to have a conversation with the community.
Right. And I'm, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
So we would need...
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I'm saying. If the vote is up?
Right.
You know, more green for than it is, than red against, then all of the concerns that we're speaking of tonight, are those things that could be addressed and changed?
Some we could, and, and some, we bluntly couldn't. Uh, I mean, if, if it's, there's interest on council of taking projects out, changing projects, then that would undercut our ability to have that conversation with the community, because we wouldn't be able to tell them what was really going to be before them in February, because you're still playing with it. Uh, so we need to be able to have clarity about what is going to be, what they're deciding on, before we can have that conversation.
Yeah, but there are a number of things that could be addressed, you know, the, just all the things with the, with, with the mayor was just bringing out, but also when we talked about, we heard about the small business issues. That's a big concern of, of the council. Shoot, that's a big concern of mine. I brought it to the table. I mean, these things are very, very important, so could we not have those same kind of discussions?
Small business issues, design issues, a number of those discussions we could have. Uh, in fact, we will have to have, should this be successful, is that, you know, these are preliminary schematics. There's a lot of work to have with the council and the community to actually flush out these facilities as far as final design. Um, and that, that's something that if this passes, we'll be having those conversations over the next five years.
Okay. I want to make sure I got everybody? Been a good discussion? I'm sorry, Ms. Fowler, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your passion and your desire for our city to, uh, be a great place to live. I share that passion with you, but I do want to answer a couple of the questions that you asked us, because you framed it as such that the children will have absolutely nothing to do if these parks are not there. I suggested to you, there's plenty, particularly for families, to do as families, that we don't see very often in our community. A community park or another facility, such as, we had this situation with the mall saying, if you're under 18, you can't come unless you're with a parent, unsupervised children, whether they're at the park, I mean, whether they're at the mall, or some other store, or at the park, are going to be just that, they're going to be unsupervised children that can create problems. What, what many families can do is they can do things together. There are other issues, and we act as if, if this does not pass, there are no options for people to do anything. There's scouts, there's church youth groups, there are a lot of other activities to be involved with it. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have these facilities, all I'm saying is, is let's not make it that there's absolutely nothing to do if this isn't passed. And, so I, I just want to make sure we were clear on that.
We're crystal clear on that, and I didn't say that. I just said, last weekend, 208,000 people live in this city, and there was not a public pool for our children, and we should be embarrassed by that. As the leaders of this city today, 208,000 people live in this city, and the first weekend after school was out, there was no public pool for someone to swim in. Now scouts, and all the other things, they're all worthwhile, probably, no public pool for 208,000 people to live in. Okay. Just make sure we're clear on that. Ms. Davey, uh, restate the motion, please, and we'll just ask for your vote.
Yeah, I, I may ask...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chris, I apologize. You, you had, raise your hand.
You asked the question, do I think 30 days will make a difference? And my response is, most assuredly, I had a lady said to me when I was standing in the churchyard Sunday, y'all gonna do what you want to do anyway, ram it down our throats? This is what I need to counter. This is why I need Michael, I need you to come and talk to these people, and make the presentation to them that you've made to us at the work session and tonight. Mr. Fowler is absolutely correct. If we have any chance of this going forward and being approved, we need to be concerted and together in here. And we can't do that until I'm assured that my citizens understand what you're selling to them. I like it. I've said that. They put me in the press as having said, I like it. But I'm representing a constituency out there that are saying, no go, and I need some help in the next 30 days to turn them around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hurst?
And just to clarify, Mr. Chris, but that process begins, as Mr. Bauer said, after tonight's vote. That's when the education process begins, not 30 days or 60. Well, they're not clear enough. We've had community meetings, but they want to be sold on it. We begin after tonight's vote. That's when the education process about this bond issue begins.
Mr. Hurst is speaking.
But he's attacking my credibility.
No, sir, he is not.
The point I'm making, Mr. Kurt, the point I'm making is, that the people are saying to me, we're fixing to ram it down their throat. That will simply reinforce their intention to vote against it.
All right, sir. Can Mr. Hurst speak now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been to community meetings where this bond package has been presented, at Kiwanis Center, I've been to it when it's been downtown, I've been to their meetings when they've talked about this, in 2007, in 2009, and as recently as last year. I mean, I've heard it, I've seen it tweaked, I've seen it presented by Mr. Poe several times. I've heard it, I've listened to it, the Federal Observer has broadcast it, people have talked about it. Education process begins after tonight's vote.
Mr. Massey.
I would like to call the question, please.
All right, sir. Thank you. Um, Mr. Arp?
I was, if, if it's okay with the council, and if it's okay with Ms. Davey, because it's her, um, it's her motion, I, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment for consideration. I, I think the concern, I think the concern is, we, everybody has some, uh, thoughts about the package, is it the right size package? Is it the, um, you know, how are we, how are we going to measure this and make sure we get this right? Because I think every, I think when it all is said and done at the end of the day, everybody up here would like to see this go through in some form. Um, and so one of the questions that I asked, uh, you know, a few minutes ago, was if we took this package, when we vote tonight, we're voting for a, a, a bond, and that's all we're voting for. We're not, we're not, we're not voting for what the package is actually going to look for, uh, we're just voting for letting it go to a referendum to, to the people. And so the thought I had was, if we, if we agreed tonight that we would support a bond referendum with an amendment that states that performance measures would be in place in the bond, where we had gates that the city has to meet in performance, in delivering the, the product and the services that we're signing up for tonight, um, to give the citizens comfort that we're going to do what we say we're going to do, and we're going to do it to completion, Mr. Bauer. We're not going to build this for Group A and not build this for Group B, but that we're going to show we're good stewards of the taxpayers' funds, that when we build it, you know, you have to meet these gates, and we have to be able to operate it, or we don't execute the whole bond in totality. Um, I think that would give some, some assurance to the people, and that we would have time to go back and look at the package after this night.
We'll probably have some questions about that. Mr. Hare?
Yes, sir. Um, and I agree with you, Mr. Arp. I, I didn't say it exactly like the lieutenant colonel said, but I was just stating that I thought that once we went forward, that there would still be opportunities for us to look at every passion, every concern, if we could do anything about it or not, according to the city, uh, I mean, the, uh, city manager.
Let Mr. Bauer speak to that, because I, I don't think we're saying the same thing that he said. Maybe we just need to get some clarification with staff, if we could, Mr. Arp. And then we'll get back to your question, Mr. Massey.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Barf, I'm not sure I'm tracking, uh, what, what the amendment is asking us, of us, I'm sorry.
I, I think as I listen to, to my constituents, and I listen to fellow council members, there's a question about the size of this bond package, a, and probably the biggest thing in most people's mind is, it's a lot of money, and, you know, i- it, are, are we able to deliver the goods and services we're signing up for a, as we go forward? And so what I'm asking for, are there performance measures that can be in place in the bond package that says, when you get to $20 million, if, if the facilities aren't generating the revenue, if they're not what we're, what we think they're going to be, you know, that we, we don't go, we don't, we don't kick in the next phase until we show that we're, we're making the operations and we're doing the things that we proposed as we move forward. So we, we mitigate some risk to, to the lender. The lender is the citizen. So can we do that in a bond, in, in the bond package?
But with the package, the initial package has to start somewhere. Would it be this package, and then it would have performance, so downstream?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. The question has been called. Parliamentary procedure states that we should answer the question and vote on her.
He's asked for a friendly amendment, sir. Is that not correct?
Not after the question is called, Mr. Mayor. The question was called before any reference to a friendly amendment. We should vote on Ms. Davey's motion.
Okay. Is that, she's correct, is she, is he correct? Okay. Ms. Davey, would you remind us of the motion, ma'am, just to get us back to where we all know what we're voting on?
Um, direct staff, the motion is to direct staff to place a general obligation bond referendum to finance various parks and recreation improvements for the city on the ballot in February 2013.
Okay. Anybody have a, a motion and appropriate second by Mr. Hurst, and ask for your vote on that motion, please? Okay. That motion does not carry. Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shavani, Ms. Davey, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey, in favor, in opposition, Mr. Chris, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Arp, and Mr. Fowler.
No, I was talking to him.
I'm sorry, are you talking to him?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. Apologize.
I think there's, I think there's a lot of que- questions here. What I was, what I was attempting to do was to see if we could, we could modify this. I don't know that we can do it tonight, because I think we'll be here all night long. What I'm saying is, I'd like to see some kind of performance measures in the bond package, so that citizens have some kind of comfort in the risk that we're taking with this large of a package.
Mr. Bates? I'm sorry, did you have something?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bates.
Mr. Bates?
I'd like to make a motion to put this on our first council meeting in July.
Can we get, let's get?
Besides the work council, I mean, the first televised council meeting in July, and in between that time, staffs can schedule meetings specifically for this issue. Don't tack it on to the work session or tag it on to a different meeting, but schedule a couple specific meetings for this issue.
Let's get that date real quick, just to make sure we're all clear on the same thing there, Keith.
Be July 9th?
Wouldn't be the 11th, I don't think, would it?
What day?
It's the 9th.
July the 9th.
July 9th. Table it until July 9th, or whatever you call it.
Anybody hear Mr. Bates's motion?
Bring it back.
Is there a second, Mr. Bates? Thanks, Ms. Applewhite. Any additional discussion on the motion? Let me ask your vote, please. Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Chris, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Mr. Harp, Mr. Hare, Mr. Fowler, in opposition, Ms. Davey and Mr. Massey. I think that finishes us up. Motion to adjourn.